Good morning. I now call the August 12, 2021 Special Administrative Briefing and Work Session of the Marion County School Board to order at 9:00 a.m. Please silence your electronic devices to avoid disturbing others. I will now ask the -- I will now explain the rules for this work session. This work session is a public meeting as defined in Florida's Sunshine Law. The Board is dedicated to full transparency in its meetings and its work. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board has adopted uniform meeting procedures, including the right for citizens to participate. The Board will allow public comment regarding any work session item listed on today's agenda at the appropriate time. Speakers must fill out a request form and hand it to the Board Secretary. After the Board and Superintendent have completed their discussion on a particular agenda item, the Secretary will call speakers' names in the order received. At the podium, speakers are asked to state their full name and address and to spell their last names. Each speaker will have three minutes. As required by the Sunshine Law, the Board must maintain orderly conduct and proper decorum throughout this meeting. Speakers may criticize subject matter and decisions in a respectful manner, but not people. Finally, speakers must be very careful not to violate the privacy rights of others, especially students and their family members, by mentioning their names or other identifying information. Thank you for your attention to these important rules. And we will now begin the work session with the Superintendent's Administrative Briefing. Good morning, Dr. Gullett.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. So happy to see you all today. We will begin with Mr. Knight, if you could bring him forward to provide our regularly scheduled Howard Academy update at this time. Thank you.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. Mr. Powers, Mrs. Prestapino, and Dr. Gullett appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this morning on the progress of the Howard Academy Bathroom and Plumbing update. In both the ladies' and the men's restrooms, the underground flooring plumbing have both been completed. The plumbers are now working on the ladies restroom with the wall plumbing, and they'll switch over to the men's by next week. At the ladies restroom, all the underground infrastructure has been put into place, the beams, the joists, the floor decking, and they're working on the wall framing as we speak. That'll probably take up till middle of next week. Then the plumbers will come in and finish their work, and then we'll be able to close the walls in in the ladies restroom. The men's did hit a snag. It cost them roughly two days in the schedule. Apparently, when the men's restroom was built so many years ago, it was built at a lower elevation than the entire building. So we had an issue with the thickness being, or the depth, rather, being too great. So the engineers have gone and looked at it and determined that the floor system will still hold additional layers of plywood to build that floor back up to the appropriate level. So we did have to hold off a day and a half till the engineer got there. Everything's back on track. They started working again yesterday, and they'll be completed by tomorrow with the decking on the men's restroom. As far as the outdoor plumbing, the Board approved, appreciate it so much, this past Tuesday, the guaranteed maximum price for the exterior plumbing work. That work will begin next week, and the goal is to lay out the plumbing in sections so that we can dig the trenches, put the pipes in, approve them, cover them up, do the next section, and so on and so forth, because it is a live site, and it is hard to maneuver around fences that are put up. So we're going to do this in segments. And once the entire plumbing system is in, there will be a day, maybe even just a half a day, where we have to switch from the old water line to the new water line and put the sanitary sewer into action. So we're going to try to look to do that over a weekend, but there still may be a half a day for the actual transition, because we have to wait two days for the state to approve the bacteriological tests, and they're not open on Saturdays and Sundays, so we would have to take the tests on a Thursday and Friday, and then probably get clearance on a Monday, and if it's midday, there might be a half a day delay on the water. They could still use the water, they just can't drink it. So that'll be the only changes. We may have to provide some bottled water for a half a day to a day for drinking purposes. But that is the quick and to-the-point update. Certainly take any questions and answer them appropriately.
Any questions?
Still on one point for the same complete date.
Yeah, the delay of the floor decking didn't impact the schedule. There was plenty of other framing work to do, so they just simply shifted to the other restroom until the engineer could come out.
Has anything altered the cost of this renovation?
No. No, we don't anticipate any impact from the current situation with the economy or with the COVID impact. Everything that we have is readily available and already procured, and it's just a matter of timing to get those elements in at each phase.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Knight. The only other item I have for the briefing this morning is I would like to bring next Thursday, on the 19th, at our work session, the draft, just the high-level draft of our strategic plan, if I may. So if you'd like to have that as an agenda item, I could do it that way instead of as a briefing. If we could add that, I would appreciate your consideration of that.
Not enough time to advertise?
Briefing? It's a draft, so that we can bring it back for the Board under a Board item in September. Is that okay?
We're ready. I'm ready.
Oh, yeah. We want to see it.
Campbell is ready.
That way you can see it in one piece together.
Absolutely.
Yep. Thank you. That concludes my briefing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to COVID-19 updates. Good morning, team.
Good morning, Chair Thrower, Vice King Chair, School Board Members, Dr. Gullett, Attorney Powers, and Ms. Prestapino. As we continue to navigate this ever-evolving environment of COVID-19 in education, we are continuing to problem-solve and provide feedback to principals and schools in regards to mitigation strategies, and we are currently communicating with principals about any challenges they may have and actively problem-solving with them as well. As a reminder, we are going to be providing district support to all schools during this first week of school. We have been providing that support, and we are also going to be providing any support based upon needs of individual schools that have any staff that are out with COVID-related reasons. So COVID-19 tracking, well, numbers will also be coming out on Mondays. The first reporting will be this Monday, August 16th, and it will include the first four days of school, so that we can take a look at where we are and how that reporting and how this is affecting our schools and staff members as well.
And then additionally, the state issued some updated protocols for students and their quarantine status and attendance, and so we just wanted to take the opportunity just to review those with you. So students who test positive for COVID-19 are going to follow the DOH return date that's issued by DOH. That return date is when the students that do test positive can come back to campus as long as they are asymptomatic and they've been asymptomatic for 24 hours without any fever-reducing kinds of medications, right? Additionally, students who are identified as a direct contact, right, that they've been exposed to somebody with COVID that has tested positive, these students are able to go home, and on the fifth day of their direct contact, if they choose, they can have a PCR test. If the PCR test is negative, then the student is eligible to return to class. If a student or his or her family elects not to do the PCR test on day five, then as long as that student remains asymptomatic, the student may return on day eight. And this is going to enable us to get students in the classes as much as possible. So we're excited to have the kids in classes. And then the other thing that we wanted to talk about is for those students that are asymptomatic and that were identified as a direct contact and are staying home, attendance is, we are able to count those students for attendance as long as we have evidence that they are interacting with the school and completing assignments and coursework. And so the homeschool liaison will be engaging with those students, and as long as we can see that they are working on those assignments, we can count them as present in school. And that concludes our updates. If you have any questions for us, we're ready to answer any questions that you may have.
Last year, there was a separate code, too, for students that were out due to COVID-related reasons. Is that continuing in Skyward? Because I know parents are concerned about attendance for their students and in terms of scholarships and athletic participation and maybe even getting that coveted Never-Missed-Day of School Award when they graduate. And so I was just, wanted to confirm that so that families would understand that it's not going to count against them, and if by some mistake it does, we'll certainly work to rectify that. Dr. Gullett?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that's an excellent question, and I want to spend a moment on this. Yes, the answer is yes. And under, and I'm going to give you the official order just for the record, because I think this is important that the parents hear this as well, 64 ER 21-01 specifically was ordered for pupil attendance. And based on our policies and procedures, students who have access to continue their education, there will be a different code this year, but it will afford the opportunity not only for us as a district to have funding for those students who continue their education while they're quarantined, but it does not count as an absence to our students. So I want to say that again. It does not count as an absence. So for parents that may be worried about sending their child to school, please do not. If they are sick, if they're a direct contact to you or someone else, we want to make sure that they stay home, and this code will recognize them as getting their education. It will not count as an absence against their record or qualification for anything, scholarships or anything else. I think it's really important, and I'm glad you asked that question.
Thank you. And also, too, I think that there's some concern in the community that if a child misses several days of school, that they'll get a knock on the door by social services, you know, a social worker, maybe a homeschool liaison, and that appears to be enough of a concern, where we do have students coming to school that may not be sick themselves, but there is illness in the household. There's COVID in the household. And we're only two days into school, starting the third day, and it was a very difficult and disappointing, I will say, call with the Department of Health late yesterday afternoon. That is the biggest concern right now, is that people are coming to school sick or having been exposed. And I know from being, having been a working parent, it's not easy sometimes to adjust your schedule for your child to stay home, especially if you're not feeling well or you're trying to, you know, recover. But this old kind of wink-wink, Tylenol, send him to school, that ship has sailed, because we are looking at a devastating cost to this district and this community if we don't get a hold of this. And it's going to take everybody. And in my comments the other night, I was championing my respect for the community and their choice-making and their decision-making, and very optimistic. So I'm not sure at this point what it's going to take to drive the message home that if we don't turn this tide very soon, we're going to be looking at choices that none of us want to have to make. We all lived through no face-to-face school way too soon in the past, way too recently. Our bus drivers can't do this anymore. It's not, it's not normal. It is not fair to have them quadrupling routes, getting kids home late, getting kids to school late, you know, missing their first-period class every day. This is avoidable. And personally, as Chairwoman of this school board, I'm at the point where drivers should be asked if they want to work the overtime hours, but if they can't, or whatever, they should be driving what they were scheduled to do. And if that means that parents have to start bringing their kids to school, that's what's going to happen, in my opinion. It's that serious, parents and community. So please think very hard about the decisions that you're making on a daily basis with your family and your lifestyle, and how important face-to-face education is for you and for your children. That's what I have to say.
I have a question for the team, but if you don't mind, I'd also like to piggyback on what you're saying, because I woke up this morning thinking about ensuring that parents understand, and that this is speaking, as a parent myself, this is speaking specifically to parents with children in school right now. This is not business as usual. This is not exactly what Chair Thrower said, "Give a little Tylenol and move on." I want to speak specifically to those parents who may not have a health care provider for whatever reason, if it's an insurance-related issue or lack of access or whatever that might be, and Heart of Florida Health Center can help you. They can be that for you. Please ensure that you are having your children checked if they have a sniffle or a cough or, I was thinking today, that these symptoms right now of what we're seeing are very similar to the typical allergies or the typical sinus infection or the typical, the typical. Please understand that because it's mimicking, because this new COVID that we're seeing this year is mimicking what we've seen before in other illnesses, what has always been the typical may not in fact be that. And don't just assume. Don't just assume that what has always been is what it always is. Please, speak with a health care provider. Please, go to the Department of Health and get a test. Please. And when you think about the length of time that it takes to do that, a day, maybe, a day or two out of school to go and do that, to get the assurance to know that you don't have to be out for 10 days. So it can multiply. So there's a couple of things to think about there. If you're keeping your children home and you're getting the necessary information from a health care provider, the Department of Health, whomever, then if that answer comes back as a negative test, or yes, this is seasonal allergies, or whatever your health care provider says to you, then that child and your other children can all come back to school. If it is a positive test, then you know as a responsible adult that you are doing the best for your family to keep your children home, and you know that you're not out spreading this to others. So I'm speaking as a parent. Please, ensure you are in constant contact with your health care provider when there are symptoms that are mimicking something else, because this is very, very different. And we want to ensure that every student can be in school and every staff person can be in school this year, because we need them all. Which leads me to my question. Speaking with principals, I know the new recommendation or the new requirements now for students, if they are a quarantine case, then they can test on day five. The same is not the case for adults. Is that still correct, and will that be changing? Because that's from principals, it's, the inconsistency is challenging to manage and monitor, but I just wanted to ensure if that potentially would be changing or if the powers that be in the health care world understand that children are reacting differently and the quarantining needs to happen differently, if you guys had an answer on that.
Board Member Campbell, a great question. And we asked that question, and our local Department of Health said the rules do not apply, that the guidance that was issued by the state is for students only, and it does not apply to adults, specifically in our case, employees.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Campbell. Board Members?
Y'all waiting on me? Well, let me start by saying good morning first. Everybody knows where I am on this whole issue. It's not a secret, it's not anything new. I'm listening to, I listen to our Chairwoman, I listen to Board Member Campbell. This is, to me, this is kind of, this is crazy that we're even still talking, how we're talking, when things have not changed, things are getting worse by the day. We're gambling, we're gambling with people's lives right now. And somebody's saying, "Well, how do you know you're gambling?" Ms. Campbell just said certain words several times that takes me back to math in high school. She said "if," and then "if then," that's a probability. That means we're gambling with people's lives. We're gambling with our students' lives, we're gambling with our staff's lives. Rivera, Robinson, Clayton, Peterson, they don't deserve what they're getting or got because we took the easy way out. It's time for us to be, we are the governance team. We're trying to chastise the parents and tell the parents, "Do this and do that. Make a decision. Make a decision as this governance team and say, 'Somebody need to put on a mask.' If you don't want the kids putting on a mask, let the staff mask up. Somebody needs to do something. We need to make a hard stance. We need to do something, because if not, I'm tired of, I'm tired of, I'm tired of getting the phone calls, y'all. I'm tired of getting the freaking phone calls of people telling me somebody's dying of COVID because they didn't get vaccinated, because we said, 'If the vaccination come over, is come available, they'll get the shot.'" That's not true. We've got people in this room that haven't gotten the vaccination yet. So that's not, we can't, that's, it's asking not even think that just because the vaccination is available that everybody's going to take it. So as a governance team, it's our right, our duty to make decisions that's going to keep our staff, our students safe. Parents want to have the option for their kids? Okay, there's other ways, and we can still be within compliance with the governor. There's other things that we can do to make sure that this district is safe. I heard all that stuff they said. I didn't hear one specific strategy on what we're doing. Not one. Did you? Nobody else did either. We heard about mitigation strategies, we heard about that, but I didn't hear one. I didn't hear anything specific that we've done to cut this thing down, and we have to do something, Chair. We have to. We got two calls yesterday, two. Our own people, dead, gone. How many more calls is it going to take? I said the other night, I said the other night in my comments, is it going to take a kid before we make a decision? Well, Duval County had one. They had one. 90 miles up the road, they had one. Is it going to take it to come 90 miles south before Marion County decides to make a change to do something different? But then I went home, I prayed, I was a little perturbed, went home, prayed. I'm going to go biblical, so, but I am a preacher, so I can do that. The Lord reminded me that, and Ms. Campbell, you may get this. In the prophets of the old would always tell of impending things, and there would always be a group of people that would resist. And because they resisted, doom or gloom showed up. I'm not a prophet, I don't profess to be one, but I got enough sense to know that I can see what's going on around us. And if we don't do something, we're going to lose a lot of people, we're going to lose a lot, we're going to lose a lot of ground, the things that we're working hard for to keep kids face-to-face, keep staff in front of these kids, we're going to lose ground on it because we're not doing what we need to do. So every meeting, I promise y'all, y'all will get tired of me, and I'm just that persistent. Every meeting, I'm going to bring this up, every meeting, until we do something or until the numbers go backwards. So just be prepared, y'all could call me crazy, crazy preacher, whatever, I don't care, because it's not about me, it's about our people, it's about these students, and it's about us doing something as a governance board to make a decision. It's going to take us being bold and courageous, because we're going against some popular thinking or some thinking. I won't even say if it's popular thinking. We're just going against some people that have their way, but if they were doing, if they were doing what was right, then we wouldn't have to make a decision like this. I'm through.
Thank you, Board Member Cummings. And it's critical to convey to our community the reality of what we're facing, and if that came across as being chastising, that was not my point. My point is, is to make sure that everyone understands how deadly serious that is, this is, and it frustrates me to no end that there are simple things that each of us can be doing and that, by all of the evidence, is not happening. It's not happening enough by enough. And I'm happy to have another conversation about masks. I think there's a lot of misinformation out there as far as they were being implemented last year, let alone what we've learned from that experience and how we may adjust that this year. One of the most common ones I hear is that kids have been masked up eight hours a day. Well, we're not even in school eight hours a day. So the fact that this has become so polarizing and politicized, to me, it's just becoming more and more clear that that's almost by design, and that was a big part of my comments the other night, was that we have to see clearly. And as a community, having been a member of this community and a member of this school system for 30 years, I know we're better than this. And point well taken, Board Member Cummings, it's not just the families, it's our own employees and the choices that they are making. Every single person is responsible for every single choice that they make in regards to kicking this virus to the curb. And right now, two days into school, we are failing, and I'm not willing to let that continue. Please, Chair King?
I don't have anything to add to this conversation. We've had it several times. We know what our executive order is, we know what the law is. COVID's been around for over a year and a half, probably more, because people were getting sick beforehand. People know their choices and their consequences. People are responsible for theirselves and their families. I surely hope that nobody relies on the government to tell them what to do. I'm not going to allow the government to tell me what to do, but I can look, and I, personally, I can look around at my friends and colleagues or whatever, and when I see people getting sick, I'm choosing to wear my mask because it's my decision and not because anyone is telling me to do that. And every family needs to have great discussion with their physician and make the best choice that is for them, because even if we make that decision for them, it doesn't mean they're going to follow it. Outside of schools, they're not wearing masks, and, you know, we're having this peak in school isn't in session, because they're catching it.
They're bringing it.
They're catching it, they're bringing it. So as difficult as it is, you know, and it is polarizing, you know, because there are people that feel strongly one way or the other, but I don't think it's my position at this point to tell a family what to do. But I do encourage you to do But I do encourage you to do, you know, be in touch with your physicians and do what's best and that's all I have.
Thank you.
So Madam Chair, if it's not our decision to tell the family, what about our staff members? We could, we could ask, we could put it out there to our staff members. And again, I'm going to say this again, I'm not asking for anything permanent. Thirty days, a month, till the numbers start going, I believe that the numbers are going to go down, but it's going to take us doing something to get these numbers to go down. It's not just going to go down just, just because. We, the numbers went down last year where we kept things to a minimum because we had things in place. Right now, we really don't have anything in place. We don't have anything in place. And, and we, I know, and I'm not telling anybody how to live their life or do anything, but we have a obligation to our staff members. We have an obligation to these kids, we have an obligation to the community as a large because it's coming into the schools, it's being spread within the schools, and it's being taken back out again. And it's, it's, this, this thing is polarizing. You're absolutely right, it is polarizing, but it shouldn't be. It shouldn't be. And we shouldn't have to tell, we shouldn't have to keep reminding people about how deadly this is. We've been dealing with this since, as you said, over a year and a half, since March of 2020, before then. Why are we still keep trying to impress it? Those people, y'all said, y'all said so well the other night, those who have dug in, have dug in, they're not going to change. Fine. But as a board, as elected officials, we were put here to make the hard decisions.
And let's talk about the cost for a minute to education. That was another point I made the other night, that every student, every child has one shot at a K-12 education. So while the death numbers may be lower because the people that are the most compromised, you know, are elderly and so on, are getting, have been vaccinated. When there is illness, there is quarantine, there's missing education, sure, we're going to do whatever we can to provide instructional support for our quarantined students, but we know that's not the same. We were so proud of the fact that we were able to stay open all year, last year, and not close one school, but it wasn't without pain and it wasn't without loss. And there were several, more than a handful of parents whose kids were quarantined more than once. So there was instructional loss then. I'm asking the community, on behalf of our children, help us stop this hemorrhaging. As far as mitigation strategies, I know we're doing multiple layers of mitigation strategies, including social distancing where we can, having students facing all the same direction in our cafeterias. I'm sure you guys can share a multitude of other details. I imagine that at most schools, they're still doing altered traffic patterns in the hallways. Every school is designed differently and laid out differently. I'm sure every principal leader is, is keeping those kinds of things in mind, but it's good to reemphasize those things and to share what we are doing because of course, the face coverings are the most visible. So people see a face covering and they think, oh, okay, well then we're cool. Well, not everyone can wear a face covering. You see that I don't have one on, you know? I'll be honest about my medical condition, I'm going to be getting a CT scan of my sinuses in the next week or so. I may have to have surgery. So having anything over my face right now makes it very, very difficult and even with breaks. So what I have chosen to do is, is take the vaccine and keep my distance and do my best to stay as healthy as possible. When I go to the schools, I've been riding the bus most of this week, I wear a mask on the bus, you know? And I feel like I'm doing my part. But clearly, there's a lot more work that needs to be done and a lot more awareness and a lot more commitment. I mean, where are we right now, this second, going into the third day of school? I have been hearing from, from my schools that we now have paras covering classrooms again, just like last year, still earning para pay. You know, how much can we continue to keep asking of our employees that are doing the right thing and they keep coming to school every single day and pitching in? This is not sustainable. In an emergency, you do what you have to do. This should not be an emergency anymore. We know better. That's my point. Love to hear about some mitigation strategies.
I'll, I'll start with just a couple that I've been working on for some of my schools. So lunch is probably the, one of the biggest challenges. And so when we've seen that, I've worked with food services and Mr. Vianello, we're getting some extra tables to space out, provide some additional seating in some of those schools. Some schools are still using their outside areas for lunch as well. We, some schools have actually had a split, so some kids are in the cafeteria and some are in a different location. We continue to encourage spacing within the classroom and so separating those desks as much as possible for if it's direct instruction, but when the time is, when the time is there for collaborative groups, then they might push a little bit closer. And we're continuing to gel in and gel out at the elementary level. That is, that's still the, the saying, gel in and gel out. And then of course, the, the cleaning and disinfecting strategies that Ms. Dobbins has, has shared, we, our custodians are working around the clock. And we're actually bringing, we talked about this recently, is that more of the custodians are going to actually be on the day shift as well to provide that enhanced cleaning throughout the day.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll add to that, that in addition, last year, water stations were purchased. So there's at least two at every school, one in the cafeteria, one, depending on the school, in a different location. And students are encouraged to bring water bottles that they can refill, the refillable ones. In many cases, they were given to them, but in many cases, students are bringing their own so that they are not using the drinking water fountains. They're going to the water stations for those refill water opportunities. In addition, a lot of the, the majority of the schools, another one of the challenges is certainly dismissal, right? Entry time, students are getting out of their cars and gelling in and then going to their classrooms or breakfast. In the end of the day, when it's dismissal time, many of the schools have continued with the procedures that they had in place last year, quite frankly, so that they can try to keep the students' social distance the best that they can while they're out there. It's only day three, we've had two days of dismissal, and so I know there was definitely some longer car lines than normal, that's usually to be expected. And in some places, it was even more expected because they are trying to do the social distancing. So it's taking the students a little bit longer to get out to the cars because, you know, maybe they're still inside, they're staggered. Yesterday, I know that the dismissal times were, were shortened. Every day will get a little better, just like transportation for buses.
One additional thing to add in regards to our middle schools. The decision was made to, particularly for PE, not to utilize locker rooms for dressing out, just for the close quarters areas of the first thirty days of school. And then we would monitor those areas to make sure that, to see where we were from there.
Okay, good. I think that something that the community and our employees really appreciate about the mask optional is that I think it reassures them that their children will be able to take their masks off and, and get a break and that employees don't feel that pressure of, okay, I don't want to get in trouble and make it look like I'm not following the mandate, so, you know, is it okay for them to have their mask off during, you know, recess? Is it okay, you know, for them to, you know, it becomes much more of a judgment call, even though it really shouldn't be in some respects because if you can socially distance, you know, then that's supposed to be fine. But there is a lot of concern and I do share that too. We have, as I've said before, we have special needs students that just can't and won't tolerate wearing a mask. And then we also have a lot of allergies in, in our climate down here that makes it difficult to have a mask on for long periods of time. So that's something to, to really be mindful of. We certainly don't want to be suppressing one medical issue while possibly, you know, elevating the risk of others. And I will say from my observations on, on the bus this week, every single kid got on the bus with a mask on. And, and the ones that didn't have them on when they got on the bus, they asked for one. So they've been coached, you know, by, by their families. And that was, it came as a little bit of a, of a surprise to me. And, and the kids themselves were saying, you know, I know, this little kid said, I know that, that we don't have to, but it helps keep my body healthier. And so, and, and maybe some would call that indoctrination, but, but masks worn judiciously, I believe, do have a place. And I think that that was the point of our mask optional. It was like, you know, no mask shaming here, it's, it's got a, it's got a place. So.
Let me ask you a question.
Yeah.
I, I heard what you said about the lunches. Is, has every school been instructed about how to do lunches? Have, have we looked at that? Because I, I got, I got several calls from parents. They said, my baby is scared to eat lunch. Scared to take their mask down to eat lunch because there's so many people in the, in the lunchroom. I, I got pictures and I got pictures of lunchrooms that are just free for alls. So what, what did the district, what did we as a, what did we say to our schools when it came to that? What direction did we give?
It sounds like what you're asking for is what can we put forward as?
No, I want to know what did we tell these schools?
Yeah.
Did we tell them, did we give them any direction? Because I know we kind of left it haphazard. We said, when you say autonomy, one school's doing one thing, one school's doing something. I heard some schools are, are spacing it out, some schools aren't. Some schools have just went back to pre-COVID. I think there need direction. I think there needs to be some direction. And every school does have, is logistically different.
Right.
But I think there needs to be some, that, our staff need to have some direction to help with this situation. If we just say, I don't want to name any schools, but we know they're, they're different, that the lunchrooms and things are different, but we, they still need some guidance on how to do it or what to do. We keep saying, as, if possible, when possible, how, as much as possible. Parents aren't hearing that part. Parents aren't hearing that part. Parents are saying, my baby came home hungry because they were afraid to take their mask down because it was so wide open in the cafeteria. So I'm asking, what specifically have we told these schools on that specific issue?
And if I may, I, I'll let them, the area superintendent jump in. Board Member Cummings, the answer is, we are working school by school, but the answer is no. I'm going to go back to the data I shared with you at our board meeting. We have five thousand more students this year.
Right.
And I can tell you, we can't socially distance during the whole day.
Right.
We can't. So I don't want anyone to be misled. What I observed is they're, they're struggling with that. When you add five thousand more students than a year ago, and principals were telling me the first day of school, wow, we had more students show up today than we expected. I can tell you from my observations and my conversations, and, and the team can jump in because I've had this with them as well, and they're working diligently, school by school, which is why you heard them describing the extra tables and trying to get some more help, get, let's get those tables in there, let's, we need to go buy them, let's, whatever we need to do to adjust. And it looks different from school to school, but, but it's not perfect. And, and we can't promise the social distancing. And some of the tables where they had the, the directional, the benches, we don't have those in all of our buildings. And so we're trying to get those, but, but they're working so tirelessly to try to make that happen, all the staff members. I'm incredibly proud of the team, but it's not perfect. It's process. And so I just don't want anyone to be misled. But I do know, and I'll, and I'll, again, I'll let them speak, that they're working on this. And, and the principals are telling me they're working through this and we're trying to help them, but it, it looks different on every campus. It does. It absolutely does. We have thirty-seven thousand students and they're all in the building now and there are some challenges.
Thank you, Superintendent Gullit. Yes. So we have been visiting school campuses, trying to also get in during those cafeteria lunchtimes to provide the guidance and support to principals, problem solving. That's how we, we came, as the superintendent mentioned, to additional tables. Some, some schools even have decided, hey, we're just going to eat in our classrooms and provide coverage just like we did last year, watch our numbers for thirty days, but we will continue to provide that guidance and support and still trying to find extra tables and work through that process as well.
But have we, my question, I guess my question would be, we, we left it up to those principals to try to figure this thing out. I get that. But they still need something from us, some type of guidance from you all to say, hey, you can do these things. Just, they're, they're going, again, they're going back faced with more students, many more students than last year, in a different situation than last year. I think, I think if we're going to give some support, we need to kind of give a little guidance and not just leave it so haphazard. I promise you, and, and I, for whatever reason, I don't know why some of these principals won't say it, I do know why. They don't want to be seen like the, the one that, that's can't get done what they need to get done. And so we have to kind of, and I'm, I'm not a principal, never been a principal, don't desire to be a principal, but, but I understand organizational management completely. And I think sometimes you have to kind of give some direction. It would help alleviate some stress that they're dealing with, and they're dealing with some stress. And I think we kind of, we're putting, we're, you said, Ms. King said something the other night, I heard her. She said, we have to deal with physical health, emotional health. What are we doing when we're not giving that type of guidance to the emotional health of our, of our leaders in these schools? We have to kind of give them some support somewhere and say, hey, we're going to get you some tables, but in the meantime, maybe you need to put some in your classroom, maybe you need to do whatever, but give that guidance, be concrete with it and say, you have that ability to do it and not just say, y'all figure it out. Because that's kind of what we've kind of done.
Can I speak to that for a second? That's where I'm going now though, is that's the principle in leadership, right? So they're the leader of their school. So looking at their school, they should be able, hopefully, and if they can't, I really have to question if they are the correct leader. And I, and I sincerely mean that. If your school cannot fit the students, problem solve. But each school's going to look differently and that's where the leadership comes in because we cannot physically be in every school to assess it and make those right calls and those right decisions. So I'm going to place that right back on leadership. And if they're, Mr. Cummings, looking at you saying that they're afraid to make a call for their school, then honestly, that needs to be, I, I think that would, we, they would, not us, but the superintendent and her team would need to look at why they wouldn't be able to problem solve, whether it mean that the students eat in their classes until they have the tables or outside, there's, and I don't need to be suggesting anything because they know what to do. I really believe they should and know, would know what to do.
Let me give you an example, Ms. King. We came back last week, we said, no volunteers, we said, there weren't going to be volunteers on campus, and then however we said it was going to be. And some took it to mean one thing, some took it to mean one, another thing. You guys know this because you got the emails. We had to kind of, that, so some schools said, we're not going to do face-to-face orientations. Some said that we're going to do face-to-face orientation. When the message is not clear, and it's not that they're not equipped to be leaders, it's just the messages are not clear on what they can do. So it creates a, a issue within the, in the community because, and I know you guys got those tech, those emails saying, how come my baby can't go to orientation and at this one school, but they can at another school? It's because we did not give clear, we didn't give it. And then so therefore, if we didn't give it, they couldn't give it. And then therefore, everybody's backing up trying, so the, so the principal made a decision, the principals made decisions, and then we didn't support them on the decision they made because it wasn't what we meant. All I'm saying is let's have a clear, be clear across the board. It's not that they can't do the job, they can do the job. I know they can do the job, but they still want that support because they're making a tough decision in a difficult time. They, they didn't go to school, they didn't go to school and, and I'm sure there was not a COVID one-on-one class in any of their master programs. Was it any of y'all's? Don't be scared to say no, because it wasn't. So you're making decisions based on something that hasn't happened in a hundred years. So you're making decisions based on something that hasn't happened in 100 years. We're making, we're making some decisions. That's all I'm saying. Let's be clear with what we're saying and give them that support to make those decisions.
Board member Campbell?
So I believe that we have been clear that we are letting principals lead. And, and in the schools that I've been in on, on Monday, I was in four different lunches, saw it four different ways, saw principals' problem solving, looking at the first time they're seeing their student population on their campus in lunch and saying, "Am I going to need to go to more lunches?" And they're working that out right now because that's what they've been put in place to do, is to lead. There are a couple of things that have been said that I want to, to back up because I heard two different statements that were kind of inaccurate, frankly. So I'm, one of them has been dispelled, which was the fact that we aren't doing anything. And I do believe that we absolutely are doing things. We are continuing with the cleaning and the sanitation and the pumping in and pumping out. And if you've been on campuses, there are lots of people in face coverings and lots of people without them. Another thing that was said was catching it in schools. We're on day three. So anything that's happened in the last six weeks in Marion County hasn't happened in a school. So I want to make sure we're clear, clarifying that. In any. Okay. Nevertheless, here's what I want to stress more than anything. The spirit of fear can cause people to make irrational decisions. And if someone has chosen to not nourish their bodies because of fear, that's an irrational decision. Because even the CDC says, it doesn't matter how close you are to somebody. If you need to eat, you can take your mask down. So you reference scripture. I'll read to you a quote from my devotion this morning that I was going to read, from Nikki Gumbel. And he says, "This life is a series of problem-solving exercises. We will never be without problems in this life. But if in the midst of the challenges you cannot learn to thrive in the situation in which you find yourself, you will never find contentment." And frankly, I understand we are in a pandemic and it is something different than we have ever experienced before. And frankly, what we're experiencing this school year potentially is different than what we experienced last school year because last year we knew nothing. And now we know a lot more than we did back then. But what I am seeing is judgment, is dissension, is division, and a lack of contentment. And if we can't find peace in the midst of this storm, that's our mental health and that's our emotional health. And if we honestly have individuals that are choosing to not nourish their bodies because they're living in fear, there's something else going on there. And that's not COVID-related, frankly. It's just not. It, it, it is a lack of contentment and, and a fear that has come over someone so much so that they don't understand how to live life and what actually is most important. And that would be to nourish their bodies, frankly. So I'm not judging, passing judgment on whomever that situation was. I'm just stressing that where do we go from here? We have given our principals the autonomy to make these decisions. Frankly, the fact, the question about orientation versus volunteers, I think, was on us. It's, I mean, I, personally, it was a conversation that did not happen. We didn't specifically use the word orientation that day. If we had used that word, we would have been able to give direction. Orientation and parents being on campus very briefly and all of, is very different than a volunteer situation, very different than good news clubs and very different than reading pals. And all of those things to, I think that was on us, that we didn't mention that specifically that day. But at this juncture, specifically in the schools that I've witnessed, and I'm sure you all have as well, I'm watching those principals lead. And I'm watching them say, okay, this is a lot of people in this courtyard right now. What do I need to do? And, but they needed to see it and they needed to be there and experience it and look at their first day counts and look at their second day counts. And some of them are higher than we expected and some of them are lower than we expected. But we couldn't have given them direction before because frankly, we didn't know what it was going to look like. And now they've seen it and they're the leaders that are problem solving. And in the midst of this situation, I believe they as leaders are also going to have contentment with the decisions that they're making that are best for their schools and their unique situations.
Thank you, Board member Campbell.
I'm not going to go back and forth with it. I've said all I need to say, to be honest with you. We, we need to support the schools. We need to support our principals. That doesn't mean they're not doing their job. That doesn't mean they're not equipped to be leaders. That means that we need to support them, point blank.
They do need support.
And I believe our team has been doing that. I mean, I've been on multiple campuses and seen members of the team on all of these different campuses. So I know that our leaders that we've also put in place at the district level are also out helping problem solve. And our principals know they can call on these support. I mean, that's what they're here for.
There is a difference between fear and the weight of responsibility. And, and I think that's what we're feeling right now. It's a, it's a situation where, I'll speak for the board. We want to make sure that every school gets the support and, and our superintendent gets the support. Whatever we can do to streamline and funnel, whatever it is each school needs, is, is what we're committed to doing. And my hat is off to every single school for everything that they have, that they always do and that they have done these last 18 months, which seems like forever. We have a shortage and we certainly know why. This is not easy work at all. And even on a good day, you know, even on a healthy day. So anything we can do to, to help lighten that load and, and I feel confident, Dr. Gullett, that you are bringing us those requests. I feel confident that, I don't feel 100% confident that every single employee feels yet that it is A-OK to open your mouth and communicate and say what you need without fear of retaliation. And that is something that we, that is a wall that we have to continue to crumble, especially now. Especially now. We need each other more than ever. And we have experienced so much success already. And all we want to do is continue to build on that and do anything that, that we can to make this better. And sadly, it's not going to be, oh, the, the one magic bullet. It almost never is. It's doing a multiple, a multitude of simple things well and consistently and having everybody willing to do that and, and, and content doing that. And, and so, all right, well, looking forward, what else can we do to facilitate the continued success of our district, to reduce the, the number of students that have to be out, the, the number of staff that have to be out? Because I also think it's important to share the reality of, of the numbers. And, you know, when you have over 20,000 students riding buses, I don't want this to turn into an Evergreen situation where we just didn't have the teachers anymore that were willing to do it or that could do it. Really, it wasn't that they weren't willing, but there was just circumstances. And that's what COVID is. It's circumstances that are taking people down. And if we don't have enough bus drivers, I mean, one bus driver can't drive 10 routes in a day. There's, we're going to reach a limit, you know? And then our community is really going to start feeling that. So one of the things I was thinking of is, I remember, you know, from being a parent, I had two other jobs at the time. And, and I don't know, you know, if we have employees out there that may already have their CDLs because they were a truck driver and now they're in the school system and intending to work their way up? Or if they would be willing, if they're at an elementary school that doesn't have the extra hour of instruction? If they would be willing to, you know, get trained so they could even, you know, like relief drivers, you know, to pick up a route here, pick up a route there? This is where it's really, I have a lot of frustration. Probably everyone sensed that this morning. I wish I could get my CDL and, and drive for this district, but I can't because it's a conflict of interest. I'm not allowed to do it, but I would, you know? Even if it was just one route a day, that would help. So I think that we are at our best when we problem solve. We really did need to, to vent this through. It's not fear, it's reality. It is what it is. So, all right, what are we going to do?
I have one more question. Has there been any discussion with, you know, MTC, how we have the truck driving school?
Yeah. I just saw it this morning.
Obviously, they're interested in driving. Is there any way that we could maybe some, have some discussion with them? Maybe they could get their license real quick? We could pay them or classes or something? That might be an option because that is something they're interested in.
Right.
I'm just throwing that out there as, I'm not saying it's set in stone, but I'm thinking of resources that we might, could use. And if they're already taking classes to drive a truck, surely they can drive a school bus.
I don't know.
Two different licenses, but I think that the buses can get their licenses faster.
Than the trucks.
It could be some type of, I talked to someone earlier this week about possibly having like some type of internship.
Or internship or something, just.
You have to get a student, when you're hauling passengers, it's a different endorsement versus, you know, paper towels.
Vice chair, yes, absolutely. We've been talking through several things. One of those is that, also, we're working with Career Source. We have a job fair coming up. We've talked about transportation, but, but all the other positions as well. How do we think creatively? How do we try to get some folks to work part-time? Thinking differently about those who are retired and, and can we split schedules? And some of the other agencies out there, what some other districts have found some success. But there's, there's a shortage everywhere. So we're trying to be as creative as we can and as flexible as we can to address that, whether it's transportation or inside our school buildings. We have to think differently and, and try to meet them where they are. So you may see very soon some proposals coming forward with how do we, how do we do that? We, you're going to hear a little bit about some of the substitute shortages too and, and subpay. And so we're all digging into the same pot, but we have to be as creative as we can. And we will need, continue to need more people to support us with this.
Let me, let me thank you for mentioning that because it is more than just the bus drivers. I've heard already from custodians already.
Yes.
That they need assistance.
Yes.
And it's not because they can't do the work. It's just people are out, sick.
Right.
Subs, parents, teachers.
Cafeteria monitors.
You said that earlier, cafeteria monitors.
Absolutely.
I mean, it's, it's, it's ongoing and we, we're going to, and we're going to have to find some, again, you said it, some creative ways to try to get these positions filled. I, I won't ask on, 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 on the record, but I know that we have a lot of vacancies, a lot of vacancies.
We do, we do.
In the classroom, outside of classroom.
And we're not the only district.
And we're not, and I, I, again, I don't want to sugarcoat this. I don't think that's going to go away. I don't know that it's not going to get worse. These are unprecedented times and we're seeing that specifically in schools. But we also know in our community at large, we also see those when people go to eat. And so we are, it's, it's a compounding effect, but we have to deal with what we have to deal with. And as the largest employer in this county, it has a huge impact on us and our ability to deliver education. We need, this is a collaborative effort. We need to think creatively. We, we ask for patience and mercy and, and, but we need collaboration. We need support and working together is the only way we get through this. And we will get through this, but we have to think creatively.
And just like I said, the principals need the support, the custodians, the bus drivers.
Indeed, indeed.
Every, every department in this, in this district needs that support. And it, it needs to come from leaders.
I do know one thing as far as transportation is concerned is that if a driver could be assured that there would be an aide on their bus and all they really then would have to focus on is driving the bus, that would make a huge difference in, in terms of recruitment. So as far as volunteers go, in our critical areas, which I guess are all critical, but, and, and I never mean to minimize any other department, but it, it, I always think of transportation because that's where it begins, you know? And when you've got over 20,000 kids riding a bus, that's a huge impact when that department is struggling. And so I don't know if there would be people that, if, if we could get the drivers and assure them that they would have support on the bus, if that would help. And then we would just adjust. And maybe it would be our own employees that would be willing to, you know, hop on the bus, Gus. But that could help. Because that's what, what I hear is that it's not the driving piece so much, although we do have crazy drivers in Marion County. But it's, it's the behaviors on, on the bus, so.
I'm even wondering if we have any high school seniors that are, you know, just have a few credit hours that they need to finish their diploma.
Volunteer hours.
If we can hire them part-time, you know, but our volunteer hours or internships or.
Right.
I mean, we certainly have that E of employment that we have, or even if they're going in a different E, frankly, if they're a high school senior and they only have a couple of credits left, can we even pull from our own student body?
Right.
We're going to have to start thinking creatively and, and they're already in our schools.
Especially our, you know, 18-year-olds, seniors, you know, they're adults. They could be screened. I'm thinking of Mr. McFatten right now, you know, the, all of that. If, whatever it takes, but I'm starting to like the change in the conversation now because now we're starting to problem solve. And, and that's what it takes and that's what we're great at. All right, so I feel like what I've heard this morning is that we have acknowledged that we are in worse shape than we were when we started school last year, other than the knowledge. And that knowledge is powerful. So we can respond much more quickly now because we have a frame of reference. And that we are putting it out there that anyone that has a creative idea to, to help make this better, share it and, and let's focus on these departments that are just so, that have been so overburdened right now. And, and let's get them the support that we need as quickly as we can. We need to do something about the paraprofessionals too because they, they were teaching in classrooms all last year. That, that's continuing. It, it's really, it's, it's sad for the kids because a, a great paraprofessional is fantastic and like the mirror of a teacher, but still, they, they don't have the same credential and, and whatever. And, you know, we, we want our kids to, to get this education that they only have one shot to have. And, and they'll have a better chance of doing that the more we support our employees that are picking up these extra areas and much more responsibility. So I don't know if Esser can help us with that or not, but it's time to acknowledge that it's been happening and do something about it. All right, how about we take a break? Let's take a five-minute break. Yes, we will recess for, it is 9:08. We'll recess till 9:20.
10:08.
10:20, sorry. Have a.
I'll tell you about those.
Okay, we are resuming our work session at 9:20. And is there any public comment regarding the COVID-19 updates? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to our Capitol Budget and Other Funds, two of three. Good morning, ladies.
Good morning. Chair Thrower, Vice Chair King, Board members, Dr. Gullett, Mr. Powell, Mrs. Prestapino. If it pleases the Board, I talk a little bit about the bonus that you had indicated you wanted some more information on.
Yes, ma'am.
You can start out with that.
Great idea. Let's lift this up a little now.
I was thinking that when I was sitting there.
Yeah.
But just to take you back to the fiscal year 2021, I do recall, all of you, at one time or another, just having a desire to do something in terms of a bonus to our employees. And from that point on, we started looking or trying to assess what kind of funding we could get our hands on to support that. And during that time also, we started hearing about all the federal funds that were going to be available to us. You recall, we got ESER 1, but that was specifically for PPE and things directly in the classroom, and of course, summer school. We did also know that there was going to be another ESER or a CARES grant. So we were looking to some kind of a way to get clarification of those dollars directly to principals and the teachers. And so, at that point, we were required to provide information to them, a list of employees that met those qualifications. We had about 2,500 of those, including 55 principals. The other criteria was that they had to be full-time K-12 classroom teachers, certified pre-K teachers who were part of the FEFP. So of course, that left out our VPK pre-K teachers. But the good news is, funding was provided to the early learning department. So those teachers will receive those funds directly from the early learning. So that left us with about 3,500. And because you had been making those requests all along, what can we do for our employees? Mr. Brian Green provided me the remaining list. So there's another 3,500 employees that did not fit the criteria that was provided to us from the DOE. So we started sending emails to DOE, can we pay for bonuses out of ESER 2? And we finally got resolution. We finally got a resolution from the Department of Education that said we can use ESER 2 for bonuses. And this is the direct response from DOE. It says we can use it to pay for bonuses as long as the LEA can justify how the bonuses are addressing the recovery, response, and prevention of COVID-19. So we felt like, at that point, which was July 28th, we could do it. So if you remember, in May, we presented a draft ESER 2, which did not include bonuses. So we had to go back and revamp and go through that grant and determine what we could move out to another funding source, some we have identified, some we haven't as of yet, so that we could afford the raises, or the bonuses. There's two little quirky things about it. In order to provide bonuses to the employees, we're going to have to pay more than $1,000. So our desire was for all the rest of the employees to walk away with $1,000 net. So we had to go back and figure out how to do that. So what's going to happen is, it's going to cost the Board, out of that grant, about $1,500 per employee. It's a little over $5 million. And as I said, we've made the adjustment. ESER 2 is due today. So we have included those items in that budget. We'll upload it, and when we have an opportunity to come back to you, we'll bring the entire budget, so that you can see what else is in it, in case you forgot what we brought to you in May. But I just wanted to share that with you, knowing that that was your desire all along, and wanted the community to be aware of that as well. But we were, in our efforts, trying to be fiscally responsible, also not knowing what was going to happen to our funding. As you are well aware, we could have lost about $11 million, just based on the number of students who were at our schools and counted on October and February count. So it has taken a little bit longer than we wanted, but that was always the desire of not only you, but the administration. And I felt like I needed to say that. The bonus took into consideration teachers and principals who were on leave. We also had to reach out to the alternative schools. And I'm saying all this so that I'm being transparent. The alternative schools, teachers and principals, I believe, also received it. Charter schools as well. But what we are doing now will be just about our students, unless you tell us differently, and our staff, meaning the MCPS. It will not reach out to charter schools, because charter schools do get ESER funding. So they can use their ESER funding to support the rest of their employees if they so desire. And the alternative schools, we look at them as being a contracted service. So we did not include them in those numbers. And I just felt like I needed to tell you that in order to be transparent. But our objective was to mirror what the Governor and our legislators did for the other employees.
Ms. Boston Ellis, I do understand about alternative schools, because they're getting ESER funding. I mean, not alternative charter, but with our alternative schools, are they getting any kind of funding extra because of all of this?
Not that I'm aware of.
Would they not qualify as a small business that could potentially get some relief? Well, but right now, our county commission is actually determining next week if they're going to be distributing some of the ESER funds that they're receiving to the CEP to distribute to the small businesses, or businesses and community foundation to go to nonprofits. So it's actually in the county commission's hands, but it is possible that they will.
I'd love to keep track of that, will you?
Yes, it's next Tuesday. The decision will be made next Tuesday.
Okay, thanks.
Are there any questions? And it's going to be a process. We need the grant approved, you know, not 100%, but we need for them to say that it's okay to go forward. And then we'll come back to you and let you know, you know, what the process is. But our teachers and principals did receive their $1,000 check, I believe, last week.
Right before.
According to Facebook. They did receive those checks at that time. I think originally, it was considered non-taxable to them. But I noticed, in the letter sent to them, it says you need to get with your tax professionals.
Of course.
So this bonus will be taxable to our employees. But the whole idea was to just, for them to walk away with a net of $1,000. But it will be taxable, because it is clearly a bonus.
Let me answer a question, Ms. Boston Ellis. Thank you. Because I know, I know, we were all in agreement about.
Yes.
Definitely, when this first thing kicked off. This takes into account those employees who are employed, what was the cutoff date?
Yes, I forgot that. As of May 26, the last day of school. So our date was May 26. You could use May 26 or June 2, but May 26 was more advantageous to our teachers and principals.
So if a person has left the district?
If they left.
After May 26?
Right.
Are they still eligible for that?
Yes, and we talked about that as well. I didn't know if you want to get into the details. If they were, if they were employed on May 26, they are eligible. Because the intent was to provide some renumeration for those who, what I would say, went through the COVID with us. We will have to handle those differently. If they are not currently employed with us, it would be like we do other accounts payables. We will have, and then they will receive what we call a 1099.
What about a person that was on administrative leave?
They are included, as long as they were working through May 26. Mr. Green actually sent an email and got clarification. If they were on leave, they received the $1,000.
Any leave?
And he has that in writing, yes.
Any leave.
Yeah. It said on leave, so I'm assuming any leave.
I just wanted that to be out there, because I've already started getting those questions. I was out on COVID leave, am I still eligible? I would assume so.
Yes.
I was out on admin leave, am I still eligible?
And those who may have retired this summer.
Correct, those that left.
Yes, as long as they were with us.
On the 26th, that's your drop dead date.
Right, and that's what Mr. Green pulled. All the employees that would have met the criteria regardless of what they worked, or what their job was. And he provided me with the list that did not meet the criteria of the Governor and the legislators.
And these, again, just for the record.
Yes, sir.
These are not just teachers, these are custodians.
Custodians, bus drivers.
Everybody, yes.
Food service workers.
These actually aren't teachers, because teachers already got theirs.
Teachers already got theirs. Some teachers got theirs.
Secretary.
Secretaries.
Ms. Boston Ellis. Library media specialist.
Is it safe to say all full-time employees?
Yes, all full-time employees.
There was no part-time?
No part-time.
And there's no extended day included in that amount?
No, sir.
Okay, so I wanted that to be out there, because I've already.
Full-time K-12.
K-12.
All right, and then here's the big question that I'll be getting asked, and the rest of us will too, when?
It will depend. The grant is due today. And we try to make sure that we get some kind of approval from them, that it's in substantial approvable form. That's how we do with the other big entitlement-type grants. I mean, I'm not a gambler, and I would prefer for them to say that it is okay before we remit it. So it's really in the hands of the Department of Education when it gets approved. If we want to go forward before that, I think we probably need to have some more conversations.
Madam Chair, for the sake of not adding too much complication to this, and some of our part-time employees worked a lot, and they worked through it as well. I'm not necessarily saying that it needs to be a $1,000 bonus for a part-time employee. But we have a lot of part-time employees that walked this road with us the entire year, seeing kids every day. I would be interested in knowing what that number looks like. I don't know if we say if you worked 20 hours, or if we actually do a cutoff on how much they worked, or, you know, what that amount would look like. But when you just mentioned extended day, that just hit me. Y'all know I'm an extended day advocate. Those people saw our kids every day, and they're cleaning tables, and, I mean, they're doing work. It may just be a little different look to what they're doing. But I would be interested in at least seeing some numbers on what that looks like, from a number of employees we're talking. I don't know if the Board feels the same, but the number of employees, potentially those working at least 20 hours a week, I think we would have to have a cutoff. It couldn't just be, you worked five hours a week, you know, or whatever. And I think that we would have to have some kind of cutoff, but I don't know what that magic number is. If the Board is interested in that, I would be interested in at least seeing what that looked like. And if there was a way to do even a $100 bonus. We have a lot of people in this district that did a lot of work last year, and we all know that. And it's not always just the people that are having a full-time salary. Sometimes it's those that are part-time that actually need the most money, and actually could use that bonus even more so.
And it does not include OPS people? We don't have any OPS?
No, sir. They will receive.
They get something.
Through the Governor, I think they call them first responders. They're getting that from them. I'm not so sure about being able to put part-time in ESER, but we can certainly follow through on that. So if that is the desire of the Board, we would have to look to another funding source. The General Fund would have to support that. So I'm just not really sure about whether or not they would approve that or not.
I would say that it's my desire not to leave anyone out, if we possibly, because, again, we've all been in this together, so.
If it would be okay if we can go ahead and submit this grant today?
Oh, yes. No, absolutely. Especially knowing that you don't think the part-time employees would even qualify in the grant.
I don't know, but we can certainly look into that and do an amendment when it's possible.
But it's due today, so please submit today, and then we can have this conversation more so whenever we're actually starting to hand out the money, perhaps.
Yeah, I think Dr. Reese and Renee Stinchard are probably going, we can't change the guy. We need to go forward.
I understand that, but it does bring up an interesting conversation, that all means all at some point. And so we have to think through that, and what that looks like for all of our employees.
Madam Chair, I was going to ask for that, too. If we had consensus to go ahead and submit, so it doesn't delay that piece, is there, whatever the pleasure the Board is, to have a certain amount you would like us to look at, or would you like to see the numbers first?
I would say let's see the numbers first.
I'll do that.
The number of.
Employees that qualify that are part-time employees.
That are part-time and.
Right. Yep, go from there. All right. To you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Our folk need to hear that, especially with all that's going on, they need to hear that, because everyone is as valuable as the next person. And so that kind of sent a bad message last week across the city, so.
Right. And every department experienced that. I mean, believe it or not, we were holding our breath about payroll at one time, but everybody got paid. And I don't want you to even take for granted that I recognize the importance of your role in governance, and that you made sure everybody got a paycheck every two weeks. You gave additional leave, and I think sometimes we forget that the additional leave and support it allowed teleworking in some instances, so this district could keep moving, and, you know, really supporting all of us. And that's just Teresa speaking, not the CFO. It was appreciated and recognized, to me, at least I saw that.
Do you have the numbers, now that you brought that up, about, you know, our leave and taking care of our employees, like last year, and even with, you know, when our employees were unfortunately sick? Do you have a number, what that cost the district?
The last time Becky ran some numbers for me, we call it the Epsilon Leave, it was in a, it was over $2 million. So it might even be greater now. And that was the value of the leave, based on the salary of our workers.
So that was with the initial, what is it, two days?
Yes.
And then we had an additional five days.
Yes. I think the last time we looked at it was around May, maybe early June, do you recall? And it was over $2 million.
Yeah, and it's my understanding that there are some districts, like we continue to do it, and they ended it.
Right.
So.
They have ended it in June, and we are continuing through September, subject to change, if you desire to do that, so yes.
Flexible and fluid.
Yes, and that is true. That's another item.
Right.
And I think there was a point when we were limping along, but we kept going. And, you know, it was great to have that support from you.
Yeah, well, thank you for reminding us of that. And thank you for, to you and your team for doing a great job, so that we can afford to do that, and take care of our sick, when that happens unfortunately. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll switch to the budget.
Let's go.
And to answer your question, Reverend Cummings, this should be 20 to 30 minutes.
Starting the clock now.
Starting now. She wasn't on the clock before.
Yes. If you would turn behind your tab seven, I think to expedite it, we can go through not only your handouts, but also responses to the questions from last time. And the first one, and it relates to tab three, Slide 46, it should be the very first one, behind tab seven.
Yep.
Okay, and it says, what type of expenditures are budgeted in Object 7900? And I just had the team provide some examples. And basically, that 7900, which is miscellaneous expenditures, includes, as you can see for the most part, all of our categoricals. And those are restricted funds, that if they are not spent, we have to rebudget them in the prior, the next year. So that was an example of some items. And then the second question had to do with our SROs. So as you can see, we have a total of 56, 37 with the county, 18 with the city, and one with Bellevue. And you can see the cost differential, $60,000 for the Board of County Commissioners, City of Ocala, $74,901.83, and Bellevue, $53,617.77. So our total contract is $3.6 million, and the cost that we have budgeted in the referendum fund is $2.4 million. And you may recall that I explained to you that what we're doing, because we cannot buy equipment or out of, capital outlay out of referendum, we moved the contract, part of the contract, to the referendum fund, so that we can use, it frees up money to hardening, so we can do fences and those kinds of equipment. And that was Latoya's fantastic idea, to give her credit.
Way to go, Latoya.
So, a quick question.
Yes, sir.
With that one, once referendum sunsets, or that's coming out of General Fund, it goes back to the General Fund?
Yes.
Because that's one of those mandates.
Yes, and that's why we have a safe schools allocation, but that was not enough to cover the total cost of the SROs.
And the safe school allocation was for SROs and school hardening?
Yes, but it didn't cover the cost. Yes.
At some point, I'd like to know the difference of what we were granted compared to what it's costing us. Doesn't have to be today, but.
Yeah, it should be in the calculation, shouldn't it? I just don't know where to find it.
Yeah, we'll write it down, look at it.
Thank you.
Okay, the next two spreadsheets that you have relate to the capital plan. And if you look in the very far right corner, it says tab four, pages nine through 12, this is a listing of all the funded projects in the five-year plan. So that these two pages are all the funded projects. You'll see in the presentation, we do not, we just give you a whole list of them, but we don't differentiate between the year. So this is to tell you all funded, and then the second spreadsheet is the unfunded. The next handout is just to give you an overall review of the food and nutrition program going forward in the 2021-22 year, just some general information. And then the next tab four, Slide 38, we're showing you the different reimbursement rates. So the rate for national school lunch, breakfast, is going up this year. For the national school lunch, it's going up eight cents, and then the snacks are going up as well.
I know this is a question for Ms. Johnson, so I'm just going to preface it by saying that. But I had heard, so I just talked school lunch, this just brought it to my mind, that we were having breakfast and lunch that are free for all students, including middle and high school students. However, I had heard that all students' families still have to fill out the form.
There are some way you can qualify without filling out a form, but there are, mostly the middle and high school parents need to fill out a form.
So I'm not certain that information, because I have middle and high school students, that information has not gotten to parents. Since I'm in two schools, I can tell you that, has not gotten to parents. So I have that form sitting on a counter going, when you read it, especially if you wouldn't financially qualify, according to every, it doesn't say everyone needs to complete this form. And if we're needing those, we're going to have some struggles.
That impacts Title I dollars, and also scholarships, I think, takes, it impacts those. So we'll follow up with Ms. Johnson.
But because we haven't, even when we had the free lunches before, I don't recall filling anything out. And so if that is required, that we do have to have that form filled out, I'm not certain parents are aware of that at all, at the secondary level. Those parents that wouldn't already normally be used to filling that out.
Make sure that's communicated.
You're absolutely right.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, my high schooler didn't even, I'm sorry, I'm calling him out, he didn't even bring it, like, I haven't even seen it yet. I just happened to see it from my other student.
I think they've gone to an online version, but you should have been notified of that. So we'll follow up with Ms. Johnson.
Sorry, it was while, I'm like, I just, I wanted to bring that up, and I haven't, I meant to call her this morning, but I didn't. Thank you.
The Slide 42 handout has basically the salaries and benefits for our food service employees, just to let you know that 9.6 million, or a total of 14.5 million, is spent on salaries and benefits for our 510 staff, supporting food service. And the next largest is food, but we'll get to that. The next two, three, yes, the next three handouts refer to the special revenue fund. It gives you a description of the grants, and then the second handout behind that gives you a little bit more information about the grants, and whether or not positions are being funded. And then the third one is basically a list of all the grants by the objects. So it tells you what grants are paying for teachers. So 1,200, you can see they're paying for about $6.3 million of teachers. All of that is informational, and I would have called it to your attention, but I thought maybe if we just go through those ahead of time, it'll help expedite. Okay, ready? So today, we're talking about the remaining funds totaling $256 million, and there is listed food service, the grants, debt service, capital projects, and internal service funds. We provide this to you every year, and it looks at the five-year plan, total revenues generated versus the total expenditures. And I believe Mr. Knight provided to you some information a few weeks ago, basically telling you that we have $511 million of unfunded needs over the five-year span. I went back and looked at last year, the deficit was $350 million. I think a lot of the growth has to do with not only the projects, but the cost of materials and supplies. So that has increased about $200,000. Just a reminder that the funding of capital projects comes from the millage. The millage is 1.5, it has not changed. And on the next slide, you'll see that 1.5 will generate $35.4 million, and that's $3 million more than the prior year. Again, that's tied into the increase in the property values. So you'll see at the top of that schedule, the property values increased 9.3%. So because of that, the millage is the same, we're still generating $3 million additional. Some of you may remember, prior to 2008-9, it was a 2 mil, and it's taken me that long to start saying 1.5 mil. And what this slide does is show you, because it went from 2 to 1.5 mil, that over the course of, from 2008-9 to this year, we've, in my mind, lost $120 million that could have been used to bring down that deficit that we have, in some form or fashion. Just for a point of reference, sometimes people forget. The next several slides, all the way through to Slide 12, are again, a list of the funded projects in the five-year plan. But what's interesting is that this is alphabetized, but the other schedule that we provided you, the first handout, we'll give it to you by year. And then if we go on to Slide 13 through, 13 through 17, that is the total. And then if we go on to slide 13 through, 13 through 17, that is the total of the unfunded projects in the five-year plan, $511 million. So now let's look at 21-22. The capital projects fund is made up of the 1.5 mil, and there's some small dollars, CO and DS, and then we also receive the capital dollars for the charter schools. The expenditures, for the most part, are remodeling and renovation, and also there is another item, the debt is the next largest item, some buses and vehicles, and then some new construction. Another way to look at the revenue on slide 20, CO and DS, which is our motor license vehicle revenue, has a beginning balance of $2.7 million. We are projecting $1.3 million in revenue and budgeted expenditures of $4 million. You may see a negative number, ending fund balance, for both the CO and DS, and also the local property tax. At the, at the time of tentative, we were in transition of updating records and paying off some bills, so this will go away, that's my point, those negatives will go away when we do the final. Also want to bring your attention to the sales tax. We have $4.4 million remaining, reminding you that those are restricted to certain areas in the county. It was an approved sales tax referendum. So we did use some of those funds to purchase the generator at Liberty, because Liberty was one of the schools, but we still have $4.8 million remaining in that. On slide 21, just reflecting what has happened to PICO since the 2010-2011 year. As you can see, we have, we are not in receipt of any PICO new construction dollars, and then the PICO maintenance, beginning 2019-20, has all been allocated to charter schools. 2006-7, on slide 22, were impact fees. You may recall that we did have an impact fee that went through 2010-11, and the board chose to suspend it, and it has been suspended since then due to the restriction of using the funds for growth-related improvements. And on slide 23, it gives you an idea of the revenues that were generated, 12 million, and then total expenditures, 12 million. We have a balance of $9,518 in that impact fee. And on slide 24, sales surtax, you can see that we had it from 2004-5 through 2009-10. Basically, from 2010 to 2000, until present, those are just interests that we've generated on the balance in that account. And reminding you that it funded Horizon at Marion Oaks, Liberty Middle, Partley, Marion Oaks, split-funded Legacy, and with middle school DD, that's when the, when it ended, when the sales tax referendum ended, and the board at that time chose not to renew it. So we still have middle school DD out there, and we do have in here, the estimated cost was 50 million. I think when I was looking in Robert's analysis, it may be up to 61 million now, the cost of that school. And then, of course, Elementary W, which was not survey recommended. So the next few pages are capital projects for the 2021-22 years. Give you a couple of minutes just to look and see what those projects are. We do have the charter schools in there, we are required by law to record them in our books, transfer them to general fund, and write them to check out of that. And I point to some, what I consider as some big-ticket items, the Dunellen High air handlers, and then Pheasant Den, as well as Evergreen HVAC upgrades, and with Pheasant and its electrical system upgrade as well. And then on the second page, I think we still have some MTI in there, Hillcrest re-roof, and North Marion Middle HVAC upgrades, and Osceola Cafeteria, it's beautiful.
Occupied. They are using it.
Usually it's to pay the final bills. And then also, of course, our transfer to debt service and the Westport High re-roof building of 1 to 12. Those were what I considered the big-ticket items.
Teresa, I was noticing on the previous page, re-roof of county office, is that this building that we're calling county office, 191, 191,000?
Yes, and Mr. Knight is behind me. Confirm?
Yes.
Yes.
And that particular project is actually a rollover project that has been carried over for several years until the board makes a decision on what we're going to do. But essentially, it's been carried over, it's nothing new.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So like, things for sports, like the track and stuff like that, that would be in this right?
Trying to think.
Saw one in an unfunded. Did see that. Lake Weir High School resurfaced asphalt track is an unfunded project in the plan, but I, I was trying, like, you're, you're talking fast, and I appreciate it, because we're trying, but I'm like making notes as we go through here, because I know we're going to be talking about the five-year facilities plan after this.
I don't see any of them.
I saw North Marion High School gymnasium floor. That was the only thing I saw.
Yes, North Marion High Cafeteria, North Marion High replaced gymnasium floor, yes, those two items. Yes, sir. And they, those items that you mentioned before, they are also in the five-year plan. And I, yeah, I think maybe one of them is funded next year.
Westport is funded, I see.
Next year, and then the other two are unfunded. Yes. And these were new items that were added. We've never put anything in that, as I can recall, for athletics in the past.
Can I ask another question?
Yes, sir.
Buses, where it says $3 million, projected 1.5. I remember, when they got paid for the board, we purchased some buses.
Right.
Was that included in this?
Those 150, we got all at one time, and we were paying on that debt payment every year. What we did was to put additional funds in so that we can purchase so many every year. Think it comes out to six to eight buses?
It's six.
Six buses every year.
And that 1.2 million includes some rollover bus, rollover monies, because we did not receive the buses as of June 30th. So that 1.2 is actually rollovers. It equals out about $650,000 a year that is allotted for buses, and it does afford them the opportunity to purchase up to six buses.
So we have some coming in that we haven't paid for yet. So let's move to debt service. And as you know, the method of accounting is we have to transfer the funds for our debt from the capital project to the debt service fund. So, but there is some additional money generated, but basically, the debt service fund is funded from the capital fund. And on slide 29, you'll look down and see other financing sources, and that's that transfer from the capital projects fund, 13.5 million to pay our debt. And on slide 30, it's basically what we're paying, redemption of principal, principal and interest, and some dues and fees. On slide 31, it's just a picture of our outstanding debt as of June 30th, 2021. So I would take your attention to the fourth column that says outstanding principal. If we came into a lot of money, that's what we would owe, and we could pay off today, 58 million. But we have payouts, final payouts, that range from 2022 all the way to 2031. No, sir.
I know, and I was talking about, I talked to Ms. Boston Ellis last year about.
But you know, people always ask, what's your debt?
Get one paid off, and then add more to the next one, like the debt snowball. That's not how we budget, but I'm like, if we get that one paid off, then we can apply that money to the next one.
What I was wondering, and you're probably keeping an eye on this, is having purchased the buses and the interest rate then have interest rates dropped, and do we get to benefit from that? I'm sure we probably got a fixed rate, but.
Yes, but it was a fairly low rate. I believe it was under 3%. It was very.
Yeah, that's why we did it then, yeah. Right, okay, so we're still good there, okay.
Chico would like for us to do another large purchase as well, so I'm putting that out there on his behalf, but I always have to remind him, whenever we do that, we're, we have to use capital projects to pay for that. So it's like, you know, robbing Peter to pay Paul. So, but I think they're, they're doing really well in identifying those buses that we need to get rid of, and you've seen all of them come through on board docs, and they have taken out everything that could possibly be used. But a lot of the buses that we have left, that they're in the boneyard, or they're in some of the other yards, they really are obsolete, can't be used. They don't meet the standards for safety belts, emissions, or anything like that. But this is another great thing that this board did, 150 buses that had air conditioning. And to talk about our debt capacity, Florida statute allows us to do up to three-fourths of capital outlay millage, so we can use up to three-fourths of that millage to make debt payments on lease purchase agreements, and that's the COPs. So our capacity is at 38%, which is conservative, and that's good. 33 goes again to talk about our credit rating. We're currently rated at an A double A3, which is pretty much the same for all school districts. I want to let you know, we did get a, what we call a surveillance from Moody's, and they also affirmed that rating again this year. We're waiting on the report from the other Fitch Credit Rating Agency, but we did provide them with the information they requested on July 16th. Some of you may recall that we were downgraded in 2014, a lot of that was tied to the economy. We moved to AA2 and then up to AA3. The highest grade is A1, so that's our goal. And how, why do we care about that? Is it impacts what our interest rates are when we go to borrow money.
Exactly, just like the consumer, yeah.
Important. So you talk about survivors, food service, they were, they get the, one of the rewards for surviving last year, just so many changes, and you're well aware of it. And Ms. Johnson was such a great leader in trying to identify how we could maximize our funding and cut costs. Some of that, and they were looking to be at a deficit at the end of the year, which we know they cannot be. They have to, they have to have a balanced budget. A few years ago, we had the opposite problem. We had too much fund balance, so she was charged to use up some of those dollars and wisely updated equipment, did some really fabulous projects in some of the high schools, and we'll be doing that with North Marion High, we found out that she will be doing that. She's, she's retiring soon, but she says she's going to hold on and get that done.
Yes, I know, thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Yeah, that entire department, I mean, I watched them as they moved employees from school to school, as, you know, as COVID took out entire staffs. She was able to do that, she and her staff. So I'm just saying all that is, first of all, to tell you that half of most of their, their budget is salaries and fringe, and then another large portion is food, the food cost. And she was able to maneuver that as well. So Ms. Johnson ended up, on slide 36, with an operational income of $350,000, which was good. If I can go to the next slide? And this sort of shows you how she was leaving the national school lunch and moving to summer feeding. So she was making all those adjustments all during the year, she and other food service leaders as well. The local reduction had to do a lot with the a la carte, so a lot of the students didn't eat a lot of a la carte. If we look at slide 38, where it talks about the federal through state, again, you'll see where her national school lunch decreased, but you see an uptick in the summer feeding, because we were allowed to go to that summer feeding program, which gave a higher rate, reimbursement rate. She was able to offset a lot of those losses. And in addition to that, you'll look down at 3299, miscellaneous federal through state. At the end of the year, they received, I believe they called it operational stabilization, and it was to the tune of, I believe, like, 1.8 million dollars. So that helped them as well. We can keep going, Latoya, get to the expenditures, slide 42. And you do have a handout that basically shares with you the number of employees, as well as the budget that's associated with that salary and fringe. Again, she was very, I guess, she was watching where employees were, where she needed to place them, and then she imposed a sort of a hiring freeze in order to ensure that we ended up in a positive place for a food service. The rest of them are pretty routine, the things that are purchased. I think the only item I wanted to point out to you is slide 45. People look at materials and supplies, they're not buying pencils and papers, but that is where we record food. And again, that's one of the higher expenditures. They, they had 12.3 million budgeted for the current year, and they actually spent 8.9 million. And because the rate is going up, she's predicting an increase in revenue, or predicting an increase in expenditures for food for this year. On slide 46, I'll just point out, the 6410 is not necessarily chairs and desks, but these are actual equipment, equipment for, for the most part, North Marion High Kitchen, in addition to what's being provided with the capital fund. On slide 49, you'll find their ending fund balance of, for 21-22, they're projecting that they'll be at 7.9 million, and this year, they're ending at 7.6 million. So let's talk about the other special new, special revenue fund, other. That's all of our federal, state, and local grants. As you can see on slide 51, the revenue has to equal the expenditures. Our federal dollars are projected to be 57.3 million, state 2.7, and local 530,000. Again, the majority of those dollars are spent on salary and benefits, 40 million. The next is capital outlay, and then materials and supplies, next highest. Slide 52, as you can see, historical grant funds. 2021, we received quite an increase in funds to the tune of about $11 million. Some of that was a CARES grant. On slide 53 and 54, again, gives you a breakdown of the different categories and how we have to record the grants. So again, on slide 54, it's a total of $60.6 million in federal, state, and local grants. On slide 55, lest you think the federal has dropped off, that's where we record the Pell, and that will be amended in, the Pell Grants for students at MTC, that'll be amended in before you get the final. in before you get the final. Slide 60. As you can see, again, 40 million of that $60 million budget for special revenue fund other, 40 million of it is salaries and benefits. And on slide 61, just want to point out to you, where it says professional and technical services, a lot of that are, a lot of that is attributed to letter of agreements and other contracts for goods and services, i.e. therapist training, consultants, and the like. $3,600 is software licensing, copier rentals, and as such. And then $3,700 was for some hot spots.
Ms. Boston Ellis, I'm sorry, back to slide 60. I'm just looking at the difference budget to budget. The other certified instruction is a pretty big number. What, who fits into that spot?
That is on...
Sorry, I'm sure it's somewhere in here.
It's on tab four, slide 60, in your attachment. Oh, no, that is, that's the grant. That's the grant.
Sorry, didn't mean to...
Yeah, yeah.
We are looking at 6.3 more budget to budget. I was just kind of looking at the breakdown there.
I don't, I don't, we do have that, so we'll, we'll get that to you.
I don't see it, but we have it.
Paraprofessionals is 1.4 more than prior budget.
I don't, I don't have that with me right here, but we do have that, because I requested that they provide that to me.
Sure. I mean, some of these others aren't, aren't as large of numbers, but looking at 1.5 for paraprofessionals, that's a little bit different direction, I think, than we had last year, it seems like. And then the other certified instruction, I'm just not sure who fits into that bucket. But anytime you're talking a million dollars difference, budget over budget, there, there needs to be some, a little bit more explanation, and I'm not calling you out on that. I'm just saying, I'm curious to know what the, the difference. And same thing with other support personnel, frankly, it's almost a million. And, and maybe we, I mean, we've been approving people, so maybe it has something to do with that. I'm just curious.
If I would, if I would guess, it has something to do with the CARES grant, but I'm surprised I don't have that.
It does, it does. I just can't recall the exact position.
Okay.
Home School Liaison would come to mind.
I want to think that's what it is, but I don't want to misspeak.
Right.
Right.
But it has, it has to do with those CARES grants, not anything like Title I or Title II, all of a sudden.
Or ESE, right.
Mm-hmm.
But we'll provide a breakdown.
Yep, certainly.
Thank you.
Do you see anything else you want us to address?
At this point, that just, obviously salary and benefits is, is a big chunk of money that we, comes out of our budget all the time, and so whenever you're seeing a $6 million change, it just helps to have, for the community to have the explanation on what that is.
We, we have it, we just...
Oh, I'm certain you do. I'm certain you do. I'm sorry I didn't ask before.
Slide 64 is capital, library, equipment. A lot of the furniture and fixture has to do with Chromebooks and computers. The motor vehicles is Dors Slasberg, you know, that funding that we get to support driver's ed, those are those vehicles. Remodeling has a large increase, and I think that has to do with the vocational programs, Perkins Post-Secondary as well as greenhouses, the greenhouses with the hospital.
Hospital districts fund.
And then, of course, on slide 65, a large ticket item is other person, other personal services, and that's our stipend subs, 7,900. For the most part, that's indirect costs. So the federal grants do, we're allowed to charge them a certain percentage for indirect costs to cover things like warehousing, payroll, and other, the other support. So that's what that is, for the most part. So if there are no more questions on that, other than what we've discussed, we'll move on to the Internal Service Fund. As you know, that has expanded. This will be our first full year of having not only property and casualty, but also the health insurance. On slide 68 is the property and casualty. Basically, the revenue is generated from a transfer from the general fund to the Internal Service Fund, and it pays for, of course, the premiums and also any claims that we have to pay. We have two people paid out of that fund, risk management, and they handle workers' comp. So, pretty much ending up with a $3 million fund balance. And then on slide 69 is just a pictorial, or not a pictorial, just numerically how we got to that. This is the first full year of the Internal Service Fund for health insurance. We had a half year this past year, so this is our first year. You will notice that it has a beginning fund balance of 12.8 when we did the tentative budget. We did get some additional bills. I think Mr. Buzz mentioned that to you in the work session last week. So that fund balance is down to $5 million. You may recall, the, the goal is to get to $7 million plus within two years, and, or at least by December '22, and even with reducing this 17 million by seven, we should be at 10 million. But of course, we will be watching this fund, keeping an eye on all the claims that come in. But the goal is to get it to the requirements of about $7 million, which is 60 days of claims, average claim. Unless you have any questions, that's it.
Great presentation, as always.
Thank you for your attention. We will get those answers. I probably left them right on my desk.
Yeah, I tried to search my email. Well, I have too many emails from them, so it wasn't working.
But we'll get you that information.
Yes, thank you so much. This definitely proves it. Big business.
So for next week, it has us on there, and what we'll do is answer the questions from today, and if you have any additional questions, we'll address them as well. But right now, we consider the presentation pretty much complete, and we're hoping to close June this week. We're hoping, so we can get to working on final budget, and of course, the annual financial report that has to be done as well. So, thank you for your attention.
Yes, thank you. Excellent. Is there any public comment? Being none, we will roll right into the five-year work plan.
All right, good morning. Still?
Right.
Appreciate, ladies and gentlemen of the board, the opportunity to speak to you for the five-year district facilities work program. This is part two of two, and I'll start with an overview. Last month, we covered the projects, the funding for those projects from not only this coming year, but also up to five years out. Yes?
I'm sorry, they took our computers for updates, and so I don't have anything to take notes or... I can go grab a copy. Oh, perfect, thank you. I'm like, I didn't, I didn't pick up a copy because I had my computer. Okay, thank you, sorry.
You're welcome. We have resources here, so.
Thanks.
But today, the focus will be on the student stations and capacities, as well as the projection for students attending our schools five years from now. So as far as a quick overview from last month, our primary funding source is local millage, which is property taxes. We don't have any particular referendums in place for any particular funding of projects, and the majority of our projects are HVAC, which is heating, ventilating, and air conditioning related, and/or roofing related. There are a couple of projects out there that are new buildings, mostly art rooms, music rooms, and cafeterias that don't carry capacity seats. There are two projects out there in our five-year work program that do carry capacity seats, the replacement school for Lakeware Middle School and classrooming proposed for Ocala Springs Elementary, neither of which are funded in the program. So our total value of the work program is $645,689,401, of which 131,151,449 is funded, or 20% of the overall work program. So now we'll move on to student stations and capacities, just a quick overview, overview before we get into the actual data. Student stations includes both brick and mortar and portable seats. So it is every capacity, every seat at a school that would be available to house students for education. And we can only alter those numbers, quantities, or locations or usage of those seats through a school plant survey, which the board approved recently, or a spot survey that serves as an amendment to that overall school plant survey. As far as capacities, the state allows us to count 100% of the seats we have at elementary, mostly because those students tend to stay fixed throughout the day. At middle school, though, they only allow us to count 90% of our student stations towards our capacity, and only 95% at the high school level. But there's actually a flow chart there that depends on the overall station count. So it's varying degrees from 1,500 to 2,000 student stations, they allow you to count 95%, 1,500 down to 1,000, 85%, and below 1,000, they only let you count 75% of your student stations towards your overall capacity. Only MTI falls in that category, beans as they have less than 400 student stations. Also, our official full-time equivalency, that is abbreviated as FTE, and that's the number of students that the Department of Education counts. They issue those official numbers. We do have the overall number for the district from 2020, 2021, but we do not have it broke down by school yet. That comes when they issue the five-year work program form. Unfortunately, it's usually issued late enough in the fall that the board is already up against the backdrop of statutory deadlines to approve those things, and so we don't have much time to look at the data per school, but we do have it already for the district. And finally, the five-year FTE projection five years out is also forecast by the department, not by school, but by grade, and we have to interpolate by grade how many of those students, first, second, third, and on and so forth, would be attending each of our schools. And we do have to cap ourselves at what the state projection is five years out, district-wide. So now we get into actual data. We have sort of a chart form for you here. On the left, starting with elementary schools alphabetically, you have the schools, and moving left to right, you have this year's capacity, 2021, 2022. This is both brick and mortar and portable seats. And then next column is our unofficial 2020-21 COFTI per school. Again, this is interpolated. It matches the first, second, third grade all the way down, but we may be a few students off based on the state's official numbers when they come in. Then the middle of the page, we have the utilization expectation and percentage format for this year by school. And then finally, the last two columns, year 2025, 2026, the projected capital outlay full-time equivalency, and the projected utilization. Now, it's important to note that in that projected utilization, that includes removal of all seats at portable levels, because we won't have any portables that will be under 20 years old five years out. What that really means, you can still use the portables, but they don't allow you to count the seats towards your capacity, because the state doesn't fund portable maintenance or operation after they turn 20 years old. That's, by statute, the lifespan of a portable is 20 years. They can last longer with good upkeep, but they don't pay you anymore for it. It's all on the local district's nickel. So as far as anything to worry about or concern, there are a couple of schools that we think will be at or over capacity. Sometimes they are traditional. College Park and 8th Street are the two in this page. We have a bar chart that illustrates this point a little further, and I'll talk a little further about the impact of the loss of stations and portables. So we'll move into the next page, more of the same. There are a couple of schools, Hammett Bowen Jr. and Maplewood stand out, as well as Ocala Springs on this page, as far as projection to be at or over capacity. And then finally, for elementary schools, there are a couple of other schools. Saddlewood is one, and also Ward Highlands. And you see in the bottom in gray, the subtotals. So, this year's capacity is officially 22,702 seats, counted as capacity for schools, both brick and mortar and portable. Our, our official COFTI numbers for this year, district-wide at elementary, is 18,392, and our projection for overall student attendance five years from now is 19,236. So we are going up roughly 900 students, but in five-year span, it's a very gradual increase. And there are some schools that, as we go into the bar chart representation of this data, that are ones we want to keep our eye on. So you have three bars per school. The dark blue represents our actual capacity, which I just noted was 22,702 at the elementary level. This is broke down by school. We also have a green bar that represents our actual COFTI. This, again, is the unofficial number by school. And the final bar, the light blue and the peach color, and I'll explain that in a moment, is our projected students that will be attending each of these schools five years out. So if you look, the dark bar going down to the green bar and then to the light bar, they tend to trend downward. So our capacities are only affected by portable seats that we lose, and we're losing roughly 700 total at the elementary level spread out. The two peach colors represent those schools that will be over capacity, even if we don't lose any seats at portables. And those are College Park Elementary, right now including portable seats. We're at 784. Five years out, we expect the population to be 809. And the same thing at 8th Street, we have 370 seats there that we can count as capacity. Five years out, we expect that school to be at 387. So those are two schools that even if we keep all our portable seats, which we can't, will be over capacity, and of course, the loss of portable seats will emphasize those highlights even further.
Mr. Knight, while you're on that page, can you explain the, how you came to the Evergreen numbers?
Evergreen, this is our capacity officially right now, 728. Our official 2020-21 capacity is not in yet, but 250 students is the average that we had last school year and five years out, because the board hasn't decided yet, five years out, whether it'll be a school or not, if it stays an elementary school, whether it's called Evergreen or not. That area is expected to have, generate about 422 students. And so because the school is not closed indefinitely just for this upcoming year, we have not shown that five years out as being vacant. And we're, we're taking the expected population that would be in that zone and putting it on the chart, and that's how we came up with the 422.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
And I also noticed, well, I was going to have this, on the capital projects, 8th Street, let's see, there was something, would you, would you say that if they were to receive the new art, music, ESE resource rooms, that building that is on this, that that would help offset those, but those aren't, I, how does that count from a student station standpoint?
Art and music are not counted for student stations at the elementary level for the first room. If you build more than what the state says you should have at a school, they do count seats. The issue, though, is as you're starting to add space to count seats, you have to be able to justify why you're adding it, and most likely, the state would say, well, if you've got too many kids and not enough chairs to put them in, you're really, in an art, a second or a third art room, are not going to teach math, science, social studies, are you? And so, it, it's sort of a double-edged sword. You can add space, but if you don't add the right type of space, actually works against the district and gives the impression that we're building space that's not going to quite educate the students the way we need to.
And the same thing would hold true for the College Park is on here as an unfunded program for constructing three resource rooms. That's not going to...
Right. The resource rooms are there because by school capacity, they allow you so many resource rooms, and College Park doesn't have enough, but they're not an official classroom, so they would not count as alleviating the classroom. They, you could do pull-out there, you could do remediation, but anything but a full-time classroom, we'd have to actually add a wing.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Before we move on, I do have a question about...
Before we move on, I do have a question about the Eighth Street Elementary. I see those numbers. I know many students attend. What are those numbers, like for professional courtesy? And that seems to be the hot spot. I mean, like, when I see those numbers, is that actual students in the neighborhood and we're looking at those numbers? Or it's a mixture? Because that's when I'm seeing high numbers, I'm like, or is it inflated because that's where, you know, professional courtesy and other...
It's based on trend, quite honestly. So Eighth Street has always been a desirable school for students to attend. Some of them because they have an older sibling in Osceola, some of them because they are going to go to Osceola because of the programming, some because they live in the area, and some because it might be district folks that are blocks away as far as where they work. So it's a mixed bag. It's not any particular demographic of student. So we go based on the trends. The state does the same thing. And of course, it is a projection. So if suddenly there is no desire to go to Eighth Street, those numbers will drop significantly. But if you look back even at 10-year span, it's always been one that's at or even over capacity.
Okay, so that's common. That's what I was wondering, and I was like, if we're thinking about adding and building, I'm like, oh, well, you know...
Point well taken. Absolutely, point well taken on that, Ms. King. I think there's, it's difficult to determine how many of those projected are an actual neighborhood zone for Eighth Street. There is a significant number of professional courtesy at that school. Very, very well taken.
Along with school choice as well.
I was just about to say that.
They're not really open much for school choice. I think Eighth Street is not actually a school choice school. They're not. I've talked to Mr. Ayers about that before in District 1. They are not one that is ever open for school choice. They are open for professional courtesy at times, but not for the general population, non-Marian County Public Schools employees, to just choose to go to Eighth Street.
And there are some options the board has in dealing with this. If you'll permit, I'll go through the presentation and recap those options, because they affect middle and high school as well, not just the elementary. But yes, there are some schools that traditionally are hovering at or over capacity for a variety of reasons. It could be their locale, the programs they offer, or as just has been brought up, the fact that we allow folks from our district to drop their kids off there. So as we move into the next two slides to finish up elementary, more of the same, Pheasant. If you look, we have 428 student stations now. We project 423 students. So they're pretty close to capacity five years out, again, based on trend. Hammett Bowen is another one. Most everybody else, we have the capacities for them, or they're in such condition that they have stayed below the capacity threshold and do not appear to be a school that would be a major concern in terms of having enough seats for them. And so now this is the final screen. We have Ocala Springs, Saddlewood Elementary, and Ward Highlands. Again, three schools that traditionally have high numbers of students attending there for a variety of reasons. And with the capacities the way they are, and then factoring in the loss, it will put those student populations above what we have seats for in terms of actual space. And so now we move to middle schools. And you see at the bottom, the subtotal, 10,474 seats is our capacity currently. And we officially have 9,143 students in our school district attending middle school classes in 2020, 2021. Again, the state hasn't given the actual breakdown per school, but has given the overall. And in five years, we expect that number, per the state's projection, to be 8,658. So we are dropping some at the middle school level, which is why we think it's more of a very gradual rise overall in student capacity. And as you look at the middle schools, in most cases, we've got the seats for them, even if we lose some portable seats. You look at Bellevue, you look at Dunellen Middle, there is plenty of capacity there. And there are a couple of schools. Liberty Middle, which is not colored, coated in peach yet, is about 30 students shy of what we would have seats for. And then Osceola Middle is going to exceed, if the projections hold up, the number of seats that we have available for students. And there is a Capitol Project, I believe within the five-year plan, to rectify at least Osceola Middle School. So now we move on to high school and our two specialty schools. At the high school level, we are going from 11,376 COFTI this year, and up to 12,337 is the state's projection at the high school level. So again, there is a rise, we think, in almost 1,000 students net for a five-year span. And our specialty schools are driven, that demographic's driven much differently. It's not just by who lives in the neighborhood, it's according to your needs naturally. So that figure, we've always been able to accommodate the students there. But if you look at the high schools in graph form, Bellevue High, Dunellen High, and Westport are the three most likely to be at or over capacity. Westport High has traditionally, again, better than five years, had at least as many students as they have seats or even over. And I think a lot of that's program-driven. It is the largest high school in the district capacity-wise, and is somewhere in between Dunellen and Ocala proper. So it draws from a number of neighborhoods, plus when you factor in the programming there, the fine arts program, which is very popular, it does have quite a few students and has been traditionally at or over capacity. So now, as far as what all these things really mean, in sort of a conclusion, first on the project and funding side, again, 20% of the work program is funded. There is no particular referendum in place to change those projections and trajectory of it. Our overall growth is relatively flat. It is slightly higher at elementary and high school level, about 1,000 at the elementary, excuse me, at the high school level, and about 900 at the elementary level. And at middle school, it's actually dropping. The year-five surplus capacity is 4,912, and that might look like we've got plenty of seats. The problem is that we've always suffered from localized overcrowding. And so you could be empty at one school and double the number of students at another. The state's thoughts on it are, well, you could simply redistrict. Some of the problems with redistricting with a district our size and our breakup is, unlike a Pinellas County or even a Hillsborough or some of the districts that are more densely populated, we're pretty spread out. So what affects Dunellen doesn't necessarily affect Bellevue. What affects the north end of the county and North Marion Heights area does not necessarily affect the Summerfield area. And so redistricting is a much greater challenge for a district like us. And in some cases, like a Saddlewood redistrict to where? College Park to the north, quite a few students. Jones to the northeast, quite a few down south. Hammett Bowen, which was built to alleviate Saddlewood, already is right there at capacity. And if you start to retreat further south to go to Marion Oaks and even the Sunrise, again, it's not like those schools are got wind blowing through the halls. And so you've got a localized overcrowding component. And we offer school choice, one of the things that's very popular with parents. And in addition, we have programs that are very popular. So some of the other things that may be considered are program management. Maybe there is a second program that could be added at another school. Of course, that gets way past five-year work program and starts to get into budgeting and staffing and how you'd manage those programs and who do you displace if you put another program there. So I guess the bottom line on it is there are options available, but with a smile, how likely are those options to be able to affect and impact any sort of localized overcrowding? And it's quite limited just because of who we are as a district and our demographic. That is the entire presentation for five-year work program. I will note that probably if the trend holds up, the state is not going to issue that 25-plus page document for us to fill out and get to the board in time for the October 1 statutory deadline. The last three years, they've actually issued the form past the deadline, and it affects all 67 counties, and all of us have had to get a waiver from the state. If we don't go to the board soon enough and we wait until we get this form, it will delay us starting our Capitol programs, because we've got all of the projects outlined. So what we did a couple of years in a row is come to the board and call it the Marion County Public Schools Construction Program, have the board approve this same data that goes into the work form. And then when the work form comes, we'll fill it out, come to the board at the appropriate time. But we found other districts are doing the same thing. It allows them to start working on their projects in the fall and not wait all the way to almost November to start. A start that late, unfortunately, would push us well into the spring before we complete design, and that would affect our summer schedule for construction. As you know, the window stays the same two months, and we time a lot of things around January's opening and in the fall, opening of school. So that's just to let you know that you'll see this data in spreadsheet form probably in September. Again, the official form coming to you whenever the state issues it and we get it on the board agenda.
Okay.
So unless there's any questions, that's all I have for you.
Thank you, Mr. Knight.
Sure.
I have a couple of things to add to the presentation. The last time we spoke on this topic, you requested a prioritized list for carpeting. And you also requested a list of what each school had in regards to covering for PE. You should have those reports no later than tomorrow. I am finalizing the PE covering, focusing exclusively on elementary PE, simply because all of our secondary schools have gyms. So you'll have that report on what each school utilizes for cover here tomorrow and also carpeting project. Also, would like to go back a little bit, as we were talking about the COVID-19 updates, and wanted to make you aware of some mitigation that we're working on through operations. So we've talked a lot about custodial services and the work that that team does to mitigate our COVID-19. But we've also, at the direction of Dr. Gullett and also Mr. Vianella, I've been working on, since I've transitioned to operations, on air quality. So we have been looking, our technical services department and myself have been looking at UVC lighting for our HVAC systems. We have talked to several companies. We've actually, as a team, went out to our courthouse, who has just now, almost a year, had UV lighting in their HVAC systems. And we look forward to some upcoming discussions about mitigating COVID-19 through UV lighting in our HVAC systems and other benefits it'll give us along the way. So I just wanted to put that out there publicly, that there are other mitigations we're looking at through ESER dollars to fund, and we'll have more information to you soon about that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And, you know, we get the emails, too, from these companies. It's turning into a cottage industry of how they can help us solve our COVID issues.
Want to make sure the science on that is...
Right.
Yes, and the science is going to be, I've done a lot of research, looking at the different research that is out there is a split decision. I'll tell you that some wholeheartedly, looking at what we put in hospitals and so forth, has a lot of mitigation to COVID, but there's been no long-term studies to support it. A lot of short-term, a lot of informal research done. But I'll tell you, even outside of COVID-19 and what UV lighting can do, when we took the field trip to the courthouse, I was absolutely amazed at what the lighting is doing in terms of efficiency and cleanliness of their HVAC systems. So even outside of COVID, there's research about influenza and about flu and things like that. So I think there's benefits that also support why we need to move in this direction for air quality control. And we are specifically targeting those HVAC systems that do not bring in fresh air. So those are things you'll hear. We're not talking about our fresh air systems. We're zeroing in on all the classrooms that have recycled air, grade levels. So there's a lot of work behind the scenes on studying what our needs are district-wide and compiling that information, and then what is the best product out there? Because we are inundated with a lot of companies wanting to be the company, so...
Right. Madam Chair, if I may also, just now, having been to schools and seeing what's hap... While you're researching the covered play areas for, or covered PE areas for our elementary, could you also take a look at covered eating spaces in those secondary schools in particular, where we are including the outdoor seating as a part of the capacity of the cafeteria? So I witnessed a courtyard of a lot of students, completely exposed, no tree, we're talking 30 minutes out in the sun, like, they're all going to be sunburned. I mean, there's all kinds of other things that could be happening. It's 95 degrees, heat index 100, you know, whatever. So if, I don't know what the solution is, frankly. I mean, it's an incredibly costly solution, just in one scenario where I happen to see it. But I am just curious, as to know, covered eating, where we are specifically saying, in order to have this number of students during lunch at this time, how many of those are covered?
Absolutely. I will look that information. So that'll take us contacting each school, so we'll get that. But I will not let it delay the PE.
Yeah, no, sure.
In other words, I'll go ahead and send the PE out.
Of course. But just having seen that this week, I'm like, wow, this is hot and just a lot.
Are you talking about, like, something like those big umbrellas?
Umbrellas or the covering over the courtyard or just something, some sun shade, something. I don't, I have no idea what that would look, I'm just curious to know. I haven't been on all the campuses this week, but just the one I did witness, it was, and especially where, or even trees, you know, something that they could have shade somehow, some way, and that just was not at all possible in one location.
Bandguards is like that. They've got that big open area in front of the cafeteria, and knowing what we know about virus mitigation, places for people to be outside comfortably, at least a lot of the time, would be great. Thank you.
You're welcome. To answer your other question about food service and the application. So Ms. Johnson has been working with Mr. Christian to do a sky alert, and that sky alert should be going out in the near future.
Okay. Great. I just don't want parents to be throwing the papers away, because I have a feeling they probably have already hit the recycle bins.
Absolutely.
I mean, seriously, if it's something that you're not used to filling out, but they're needing from every secondary parent, they're probably, they've already hit the recycle bin.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
As always. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, we will move on to our last agenda item for today.
Mr. Hurley.
Mr. Hurley, always good to see you.
Good morning.
Thank you. Same here.
He talks fast.
He does.
Does he talk fast?
I don't know, he's pretty detailed.
Sometimes I don't even understand myself.
I'll hand out for you this one.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
See, get a handout, Ms. King.
I'll start and say, good morning, Chair Thriller, good morning, board members.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, Dr. Gullett.
Good morning.
Excuse me, Kevin. I have something for him.
Okay.
I was interrupted, so I stuck with Ms. Prestapino. And anybody else I may have forgotten, I apologize. So this morning, I've got this information for you. It's a rehash of what we talked about on June 17, and that is the joint public workshop for elected officials. We had requested, made a request to the county that they organize this for September 29, about 9:00 in the morning, at the Southeastern Livestock Pavilion. And we went through some agenda items on a PowerPoint last time I was here in June. And now I just see this as an opportunity to look at a couple of the meteor ones. And I also recall that Mrs. Campbell wasn't here at the time, and so there were at least a couple of items that were worth revisiting to ensure we've got the substance of them and see if there's anything we'd like to pull, flesh out, or other additions or deletions. And the last thing I would say, my whole thinking behind this is that it's an opportunity that we could, if we could provide maybe a couple of bullet points on each item, might help to facilitate better understanding when these go out to the other elected officials versus them coming to a meeting cold and kind of see a generic agenda item and...
Mr. Hurley, have we confirmed for sure September 29?
We have not. I've got a request in, I've got a couple of voicemails in to the county, and I'm waiting to hear back. And so I've not heard from them, but I'll say one thing that's in to the good is, I was speaking with my colleagues at the city of Ocala, and so they've at least heard of it, they're aware of it. And so I'm thinking that while I haven't heard directly from the county, it's presumably out there, you know? I think that they've, you know, got it underway.
Okay, because I've blocked it out on my calendar, and I would suggest that we all do the same.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right. So I'll get my...
Is there anybody that needs one of these or wants one?
No. Kevin, let's go. All right. So I'll start at the... So I'll start at the beginning. And as far as these are, the agenda items, and I've put some of my comments, right, wrong, or indifferent, and I would ask for your input on those. And they're in the bold brackets, the squared brackets. And so I see this in kind of two blocks. The one informational items, I think that's pretty straightforward and should go quickly at the meeting or the workshop, and I can present those. And then the two discussion items is where I think we probably need a bit more information and flesh it out today. And I'm thinking those are the substantive ones that you all would be wanting to make your points and, you know, have discussion on. So if you'll allow me, I'll go through the informational items and give you just a couple of my thoughts on those, and then we can move toward the discussion items and get your input. So as far as the informational items, I've scripted it all out here. I've got, you know, we have identified in the EPS, as Educational Plant Survey, which we've just done, we've completed that a month or so ago. And we've indicated that Lakewood Middle School is no longer needed for educational purposes. So that's a categorization or a classification. Robert, hang with me if I misstate anything here. Basically, when we do that, then we're indicating that we aren't intending to, or that the board's not intending to spend any additional capital funding on that school.
They're not in the plan, I mean...
Right, right. And so that's what we're doing. And I think that's worth passing along to the elected officials, you know, particularly like Bellevue and the county commission in general. And then also, we are, need to be working on developing a transition plan, and that would be some sort of a way that we get from or through closing Lakewood Middle and opening up Middle DD or the middle school site in the shores, and how we do that, and whatever the period of time is that it takes to do that. Item B, I have keep or delete. This was about school improvements and hurricane hardening costs. And Mr. Campbell, I think this was one that you and I had talked about and had it in here. And so my recollection, if I recall correctly, was that you were interested in communicating just how much goes on, how much the staffs of the schools or those service staffs that are there in place when we have a storm event, how much they do, and giving them kudos.
And I think that's a piece of it. I do think for the purpose of the elected officials and so forth, to understand, and this potentially is something that Preston Boland would share with them on a regular basis, but for them to understand the capacity we currently have with hurricane shelter space that we currently have, what the cost is to harden, additional, you know, what we're looking at if we were to expand into that current shelter capacity, and what that cost is to the district. Because certainly if he's presenting this as the number of beds, essentially spaces, that we have in these shelters, but we need to be at this projected number, then all of that responsibility falls back on us to ensure that we have the capacity, we have hardened the appropriate schools in the appropriate locations. This is the cost associated with what that looks like, and then certainly the staff cost as well. From an informational item, absolutely is perfect for information. I don't know that it's necessarily going to require any additional discussion. But I do think for all of our elected officials, as we talk through emergency management procedures for hurricanes, to understand what that looks like from a sheltering capacity standpoint. So I'm open to what you all think on that. But, I mean, I just, as we know, I mean, we got a potential of a tropical storm coming next week. I mean, we don't, I think it's actually dissipating. But as we know, that there's potential for Citrus County to all come here, and there's potential for Volusia County to all come here. And what does it look like from a capacity standpoint? And if the county or other areas of the government elected officials would be interested in saying, well, we definitely need to have X number of spaces, if that were to be the conversation, then all of that responsibility for hardening those spaces falls back on the school district. And it's just for information purposes, to understand what their expectations are. And maybe an elected official at the county commission has a different expectation than what is currently being presented for emergency management. That was the reason I wanted to bring it up.
And I know I asked for your input, but just to say, you know, my interest in this too is in part to introduce something and then hand it off if there's more to be fleshed out about it, but to try and go through these quickly and see.
Something that jumps into my mind about this topic is that we made the trip to Pasco County because they have a freestanding hurricane shelter that is, doesn't impact our schools. And as we continue to grow, it might be, I think it would be worthwhile to mention that to the county. And perhaps going forward, you know, World of Ecology Center is starting to become all things to all people, but it does jump into my mind because every single building there has its own generator. And everything, and it's all underground power. So in terms of collaborative partnerships, in my mind, I'd love to take some of the stress off of our schools for doing sheltering. You know, it's difficult enough when the storm is over to help our kids get back and get everything going again. So to me, that would be an area of potential collaboration.
And if the decision's made, obviously, we need to open one shelter, all schools shuts down. So I mean, to your point, absolutely. I had not been to the Pasco location, but that's a great point, that are there additional options that we could look to? Obviously, it's statutorily, it's our responsibility, I believe, but I think if a county decided to make that kind of, it's a great point.
It just occurred to me that, so this is logistical, but I think I'll go back and listen to the results of today and then our previous meeting and jot down items under the particular headings that go with the agenda and circulate them to you all so that you...
All right, so I guess as far as this topic is concerned, it's to bring some awareness to our responsibility and the impact of that, and also open the door for discussion and ideas for other places or other buildings, you know? Because certainly hurricanes affect the whole community, not just the school system.
Okay.
Anything else on that one? Good.
Okay, I'll go to item C.
All right.
So item C is amend the school planning inter-local agreement. That's the one that has the one particular subsection that we're taking advantage of in order to hold this workshop. It has a number of items that are out of date and just antiquated and need to be revised. Some of those are sections about concurrency, school concurrency, co-location, and shared use. That's something that was discussed even back in 2015. And I know at different points along the way since then, we've encountered, I think, a realization of like, just the difficulties in terms of the logistics of doing that, given Jessica Lunsford Act, et cetera. So certain things like that certainly need to be revised. And some other items are committees. There could maybe be, you know, a deletion or a change of the committees that it calls for forming. And the reality is that, well, we're not doing, we're not doing things according to the letter of the agreement. But we've got something that's working, I think, in my estimation anyways. I haven't heard any complaints from the local governments. The exchange, the information exchange and the dialogue seems to be working. And there are some particulars about, like, we're not doing it recently, but in the past, on acquiring a site, a future school site, and going through the process of what all, who needs to know about it, who needs to know what about it, as before the school board goes and just buys it? You know, are there any other problems that might be worthy of getting input from the local government? So we've kind of worked out a different, parallel process that's not identified in the agreement. And I think we could codify that, you know, put it in as we're actually doing it instead of having...
That's what we're doing, right, it should be documented.
So that completes, you know, my, the first three informational items. And now I would say on the discussion items, I think the first one is certainly important to me as a planner, and I'm sure it's important to you as well. And I think it's something that the local governments can actually have a part in. And when we talked about this briefly at Executive Committee, we had some conversation about not appearing to be asking, you know, simply for money or some sort of financial contributions to do this, but also how we can do it. And what I'm looking at here is, so we've got the local governments, and it's their purview to hear and approve entitlements for land uses and the subdivisions. And so the lots can mount up, and the apartment units, et cetera, can mount up. It's always subject to consumption then, you know, it can be approved, but do they actually get built, and do people actually come and occupy them? Different story where I've said to you previously that we just need to kind of sit tight and monitor closely to see what's actually materializing, you know, is it sustainable? If they're just created on paper and it never materializes, it's not a problem. But particularly in light of our overcrow, our localized overcrowding, the local governments have things like 163 development agreements where they could do some sort of exactions. Now, would they be inclined to do it on behalf of or in partnership with the school board? I don't know, but I've just jotted down some points like that, certainly for consideration now. And then, you know, as to whether you want to raise them or discuss them or try to discuss them at the workshop. I've thought of, there are public-private partnerships. I know Pasco County does that too, and generally that happens when a developer comes in and they're doing a project or subdivision, and so they make certain contributions. And maybe there's some sort of combination of all these things or that, but it certainly seems worthy of, you know, having a discussion.
They may not even know that we're overcrowded perennially at Saddlewood and College Park, and, you know, we live this every day, but they may not even know that, so.
I feel like the county commission knows that because I've made those statements fairly recently to them.
Okay, good.
Maybe the city to a lesser extent, but then Bellevue, you know, Bellevue's getting a fair amount of pressure because of the villages and proximity to the villages.
And we're overcrowded at Bellevue High School and...
And then there are a couple of other things, you know, there's some statutes, and there are things like special assessment districts or what, and, you know, that... Perhaps I could talk with Mr. Powers about that to just look at them, if they even seem like something that would be of interest. But in effect, like, the county does MSBUs or MSTUs, Services Taxing Units or benefit units. And that's basically what you would do. You know, you have an area, you would want to make assessments, in short, to try and provide some sort of enhancement to getting a school built or that. That's all I have for A. And then, moving on to B, school funding referendum. I ask keep or delete the topic, and if keep, you know, are there, I just threw out, are there any top three items that you might want to mention as bullets to, you know, to pass on to the other elected officials to facilitate the conversation?
Especially since they need to bless it anyway as part of procedure. I think we do need to let them know that, what our intentions are. And that certainly the cost of providing school safety and the officers is very high. And we want to start building support.
That would definitely be one of the bullets, for sure, if we were doing three aspects or issues to it.
The one that we intend to, put it back on the ballot, I think we've decided that. And so it's coming, the second about the need, the continued need, the ongoing need for school safety. We have a lot of projects that I know Dr. Gullett has shared concerns about that we want to make sure that we get done. And so that would definitely be a big one.
I think that potentially us discussing, you know, maybe not actually telling them what, but that we're considering enhancing things in our potential middle, high school... I'm going to say elective offerings, but we had mentioned something about life skills training and shop class back in middle school and some things like that that we need to figure out. Obviously, we don't know how we're going to fund it, and the referendum's funding other things right now. But I agree with Chair Thrower. Last time I was a part of this conversation, we talked about that we might need to tout this with a little something different in it, whenever we go to the community again, not just what we've been asking for.
Well, and the career and technical education continues to be such a draw and factor, hopefully being able to begin to provide the transportation to these places and increase the choice that way, by increasing the options to actually be able to access is going to be really big. And also too, it's burned in my mind, $120 million that we're missing of capital. And I know we can't use referendum for capital, but that genius of switching, you know, is going to free up money for our capital projects, hopefully, or at least some of them. So having lost the, going from 2 mils to 1.5 mils during the financial crisis, and that not being restored has really put us behind the eight ball. And so I think that that's important to convey. And those are three top, my top three reasons for feeling like we need to continue to have the referendum because we're funding things that are really pretty basic, that everyone wants for kids. Art, music, PE, class size is a mandate.
Well, and obviously, I'm speaking specifically of the county now, but the city as well, cities as well, they're approving these large projects coming in, they know the jobs they're creating. However, we're creating the workforce, so, and we're growing the workforce. So in order to ensure that they are understanding what this partnership is, and I know we have a great team of staff that helps with that. But again, sometimes when an elected official is talking to another elected official, it's a different kind of conversation than staff to staff. And so just another reason why talking about what those programs might be to enhance the workforce.
And what that does for the county, you know, employment-ready individuals, okay?
And if I may comment on that, Chair Thrower, when you mentioned career and technical, my recollection is that when we met with the county administrator, he said that was something that they were interested in.
Sure.
One of the items, so I think that would stir good conversation.
State reps are as well, so I mean, it would...
Stir good conversation.
Great opportunity for partnership there.
And as we're talking with the county, school safety and stuff, we also have to keep in mind that we have to be, start preparing for negotiations again, for our contracts, SRO contracts, that stuff is about, is sparring.
Right. When do those come up again?
This year.
Yeah, it's this year, isn't it?
That's what I was thinking.
The end of this year for...
The end of this year.
The end of this year.
Yes, right.
So, I mean, those are some conversations that I'd rather for us to be having on the front end than waiting to the back end.
Right, great point.
So that would be included in the bullet items here?
Yes, because that's a part of our funding referendum.
Okay. All right, and then item C, the American Rescue Plan and Communication Infrastructure, keep or delete?
Oh, yes.
So while I would love to keep it, as I indicated earlier, they are making some major decisions next week about how they're planning to use this money.
They can update us.
They can update us. I would love to have that information from the, and that, I actually was going to ask whenever you were done with all this, if, when you've been speaking with their staff from each of these different government entities, if they also have things they want to talk to about? We don't need to be the ones driving the agenda.
And well, I feel, I couched it somewhat that way in the email when I sent it to them by saying that, you know, the school board had considered, and we had a couple of other items, like maybe from the city, and I can't remember the second one. But I said that, you know, the school board has opted to submit just the school board's items with the understanding that when it goes out, you know, that the other elected officials would have their opportunity to submit.
Right, right. And Monir, when we met with him, he came up with some points that he felt that the county would want to share with us and be interested in, so, yeah. And this is the draft, and we'll be sending it to them, and...
So I have sent this. I sent this back the end of June.
Right.
And I'm just, you know, for our benefit or your benefit, you know, wanting to try and ensure that we've got it fleshed out.
Yes, what I meant is that this fleshed out version that we're doing today will then go back to them, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And the interesting thing about this American Rescue Plan and infrastructure, obviously, the Senate just passed a new infrastructure bill. So I'm not sure how that's going to trickle down if the House passes it and what that's really going to look like. But it may be that this topic is even expanded upon. American Rescue Plan is one thing, but if this infrastructure actually has some, obviously, I haven't read it...
Money coming to us for it.
Something for communication infrastructure, then what that looks like to ensure that our schools and the areas where our schools are, are a part of some of the first locations that they're heading out or whatever. And obviously for them also to be aware, the city would know very well that we've just, you know, cost out to... just, you know, cost out to take Ocala Fiber Optic out to our Dunell and schools, and so that's something that we're doing already, but I mean, there could be additional funding that we could put, you know.
We could add to it updates, updates on the infrastructure plan.
Right.
Okay.
So I've just jotted down solicit updates from the locals, or keep it as an item and ask for information from them. And then item D is Olredick High School Demolition and Revitalization, so there's been a vote to proceed with the demolition there, and then I think, you know, that seems, it's worthwhile to mention, and then I assume that would be developing a plan, or if you are interested in asking the question, floating the question, is there, you know, do people have ideas?
I'm open to hearing what they have to say. I mean, just, I believe that we saw that the property value of it is much less than what we're spending to demolish. I think that's what we saw, which that's neither here nor there, that the issue is what, what does the town of Reddick see as what they would like there, or what does Marion County and.
Good ideas.
There.
Yep.
That's just an idea generation.
It's going to be, it's going to be a open piece of land.
Is the mayor of, is the mayor and the city council of Reddick, they're going to be invited to this?
They are.
Okay, good, because I met with them yesterday, and they, I'm sure they're going to want to be part of that conversation, so if you can somehow get that information to them, that this will be on that agenda.
Need that hard date, too.
That would be great.
Firmed up, the 29th, that's going to be here before we know it.
I have a pretty good rapport with the mayor over the years, and so I was also thinking about getting in, I'm not thinking about, I'm going to get in contact with him in advance of the actual start of, you know, demolition.
Yeah, they, I mean, we had some good commerce, or I met with them yesterday, and they are aware that, you know, I think they're going to put some fencing up next week and start, they know it's headed our way, and they had, you know, just, they were wondering where, what we were going to do with it in the future, so I think if they could just definitely, if you don't mind reaching out and inviting them.
I'll do it.
Thank you.
And so that gets us to item E and the last one, and it's proposed county project impacting Hillcrest School, and so I would think of, my input here is that we would request an update, that they just provide, be prepared to provide some sort of a briefing and discuss any alternatives if they see some, or, you know, whatever you or we may have.
I would say let's just ask for their update.
Okay. And leave it at that?
Yeah, let them drive the ship on this one.
Okay. And the last thing I had was brief the board yourselves on progress in scheduling the workshop. I did that at the front end. And then during our Executive Committee discussion, we talked about where there had been a board preference for trying to get people in person versus, you know, making it too, making it very easy to participate online, and then in light of the way that COVID variant is progressing now and that situation, it may be something we might want to consider to go back to making an online option available, so.
Fortunately, we have six weeks, and maybe, yeah, see, because the preference is to meet in person, socially distanced, you know, with precautions, and that would be, in my opinion, always best, however, subject to change. And that does lead me to maybe one more, maybe an F, which is common messaging opportunities for COVID-19.
Across local government?
Yes.
Of elected officials?
Yes.
There's been a lot of one-off.
Oh, my goodness, and so many, so many conflicting messages, not so much conflicting messages, but conflicting information and confusion, and so, yeah, that would be great.
And I would definitely have a preference to in-person. I mean, the purpose of a workshop is so that we can share and collaborate and discuss, and that is not possible on Zoom, it just isn't, unless we broke out into breakout rooms, which is going to be a sunshine issue, and I mean, it's just, you can't do that in an online capacity. So in the event that, for whatever reason, we might need a backup date, I mean, this is a very important, I'm so excited that this is going to be happening, but this is an incredibly important opportunity for all of the local governments to get together and talk through some pertinent things, and they probably have issues to bring to us as well, but this is not something, in my opinion, that can happen online.
Well, we can't predict who gets sick and when. For example, Ms. Campbell, you were sick a couple of weeks ago, Dr. Gullett was, I know there's been some county commissioners, and if we wait and keep pushing it off for the perfect time when everyone can be well at this point, I'm not sure it would take place. I think it might be important, if we have a place where we can, but we also need to have the option to Zoom in, or it just may not take place, in my opinion. It just, no one predicts when they're going to be sick and when.
Absolutely, and that wasn't my intent, Ms. King. My intent was that we go to a strictly all Zoom meeting, and that was what I'm saying. I don't think that would be productive at all if every single person represented in the meeting was not, at least attempted to physically be in a space. Absolutely, if there are situations, we can hold meetings whenever one of us is not present, county commission's doing it, and so we can do that, but I do believe it warrants at least attempting to have some face-to-face interaction.
So would you all be satisfied with if I was to just pass on that we're at least contemplating the need for contingency plan of some sort, or?
That we would very much like to stick to the September 29th date with the, with the hope that we will all be able to attend in person. However, given the nature of things right now, we're going to have to see where we are at that point.
Or just ask for options to have that available?
To have the communication.
I think it's either or. I don't think it should be hard.
Either or?
Yeah.
And those that's going to show up, those that'll do it, virtual?
I think so, too, and I don't think we should be driving.
I would, I would think that everyone's preference would be in-person, but depending on their personal circumstances, if you've been quarantined and you still want to participate, then, you know, you'd have a Zoom link, so, or for your own personal health reasons, you feel like you shouldn't, all those things. Okay.
That's all I have. I don't know if I talked fast enough, but.
It was great, and we needed it, too, to bring it together, so, and we know that you'll let us know as soon as the September 29th is 100% confirmed, and.
As I hear back.
Yep, we'll start to look forward to it. Let me know if I, if there's anything I can do to help nudge that along if.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right, is there any public comment? All right, seeing none, we will move on to our board concerns. Dr. Gullett, is there anything else you wanted to share today?
Thank you, Madam Chair, only a clarification, because I was not, I did not have my reading glasses on earlier. So for the record, the rule that I referenced from the State Board and the Department of Education is Rule 6A ER 2101, and that was reference to pupil assignment, and I'm sorry, pupil attendance, so they are recognized as present if they're quarantined, so wanted to set that straight for the record for the number. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Attorney Powers, anything for us today from Legal?
No, here's from Legal, thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Prescottino? Okay, Ms. King?
No.
All right, I'm coming, Campbell.
No.
Okay, and I don't really think that I had anything else, I can't wait until next time. I want to thank everyone very much for their participation today. We did add this work session, and it just proves all over again, there's just a lot going on that we're trying to stay on top of and problem solve as we go. I continue to wish everyone well, and with no more business, I will make a, not a motion, I'll just say, let's adjourn at 12:20. Take care, everybody.